I'd like to call to order our public hearing tonight. We've got a hearing before the meeting scheduled for 6:55 PM. A public hearing for the purpose of considering and taking action on the following resolution, which was introduced at a meeting of the common council on the 10th of November 2008. Resolution number 22-08, which is for vacation of a portion of Pearson Drive. Do I have to read the whole ordinance or the whole resolution? Vacation of a portion of Pearson Drive in the city. Is there any member of the public here that would like to be heard on that item? If so, you can come up to the podium at this time and address the council. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Is there anyone who would like to speak on the hearing on the vacation of a portion of Pearson Drive?
Move to close the hearing.
We have a motion to close the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing is closed. And we'll call to order the meeting of the common council for December 15th. Will you -- oh.
Better not forgive them.
Almost forgot. Mr. Grove?
Sir.
We're ready to bring in those Cub Scouts. We've got a group, I think it's PAC 211, is it?
This is it.
PAC 211 Cub Scouts are here tonight and we're going to have them come in and lead us all in the pledge of allegiance. We all please rise and when they're ready, they can start us off.
(Chanting) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Here, I've got some things for you. Some hands, you can handle this now. If that's not enough, there's more. Here's some information about the meeting.
Okay, guys, let's go back to the back row.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Knutson?
Here.
District one, Morissette?
Here.
District two, Brokaw, is absent. District three, Bernard?
Here.
District four, Wyland?
Here.
District five, O'Malley?
Here.
District six, Burchill?
Here.
At this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council on any item that's not listed on our agenda but might come before the council at a future meeting, this is your chance. You can come forward and be heard at this time. Anyone wish to address the council tonight on any item that's not on our agenda? We'll move on to the consent agenda. There's a couple of changes here to the consent agenda. The sailboat mooring fees needs to be removed. That was number seven. The park user fees piece was number five under Finance Committee. Both of those, we made changes in Finance. Those need to come off. The job descriptions from wastewater was number 10. That needs to be changed to say, scratch out the parks and public works -- pardon me. The wastewater treatment plant would be scratched out. Street maintenance would be scratched out. Parks and public works form and position could remain as a consent agenda unless someone else has another change. The application of Robert W. Madsen for a second-hand jewelry dealer's license, that should be removed from the consent agenda. Anyone else have any other changes to the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'm ready for an emotion.
You have to read them first.
Yep, that's right. We better read them.
To approve the public hearing and regular meeting minutes of November 24th, 2008. To approve renewal of the conditional use permit to Hudson Motors Chuck Volan to use the site at 1,000 O'Keefe Road for an outdoor vehicle sales lot with the same conditions placed on the permit as originally approved, and with another review in three years, November of 2011. To approve the amendments to Municipal Code, Chapter 253, floodplain zoning as proposed by the Community Development Director, and schedule a public hearing for Monday, January 19th, 2009, at 6:50 PM. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $562,114. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the 2009 sailboat mooring policy as approved and recommended by the Park Board. To approve a one-year extension of the concessions agreement for Lakefront Park to allow the Giggle Factory to operate the stand from Memorial Day to Labor Day with 5% of gross sales to the city. To approve the December 15th, 2008 drafts of the public -- of the park's public works lead man as submitted. To approve authorizing the Police Department to order two 2009 Ford Victoria Squad Cars from Anderson Ford Baldwin, Wisconsin, at a cost of $21,935 each for delivery in 2009, and to be funded from the 2009 Police Department budget. To place on file the Community Access Board minutes of December 9th, 2008, and the Public Utility Commission minutes of November 11th, 2008. That is all.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Roll call vote.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Consent agenda items are approved. See, we have two former mayors here tonight. Would the two of you be here for the same item?
Yes.
Which item is it?
It had something to do with the item 17.
How many of the rest of you are here for item 17? Most of you? Would the council like to adjust the order in which we take things tonight, or do you want to leave that to the end?
Let's do it now.
Do it now.
Let's respect their time.
And we get everybody else home sooner. At the Finance Committee, we ran out of time and we did, I believe, 16 or 17 items on our agenda and postponed this room tax item to the full council so that we would have more time to spend on the items. But I know that two of the members of the Finance Committee have their own proposals to make as to how things might be done. Those two being Lori and Lee. We've also got a presentation that was asked for at our last meeting from the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, Kim Heineman, and she's prepared to give that presentation. I guess, would you like to hear her first? I take it there's some public comment if you wish to hear that. I'm going to leave that a little bit up to the council members here tonight. Who wants to go first?
I'd be happy to hear the presentation from the Tourism Bureau.
I think that makes sense.
Without objection, Kim, you're on. This is Kim Heineman from the Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau.
Are you ready to -- Paul, you want to put up on the screen, please?
And I guess, further background on this, at our last meeting, we discussed the state law regarding tourism support funded through the room tax dollars, and that from the inception of the law, the Tourism Bureau has been the major recipient of that money. The suggestion was to increase that up to 70% each year from the current 40%, and the question was asked, what would the Tourism Bureau do with the money?
Right. Well, thank you very much, first of all, for giving me the opportunity to make this presentation to you. I did provide this information in advance, so hopefully you had a chance to review some of it so that some of the questions may be answered in advance. One of the things I noticed at the last meeting was that there were some questions with reference to the Chamber of Commerce, Tourism Bureau, what the differences are and so forth. So I thought with just a few moments, I might explain, especially for the viewing audience, the differences. What is a Chamber of Commerce? The Hudson Chamber of Commerce was established in 1953, almost 56 years ago. Its mission statement is, "Serve and inform the membership by promoting a strong local economy, advocating business interests, and supporting recreational and cultural opportunities." The Chamber of Commerce is a unified voice of business. It provides networking and marketing opportunities. It provides educational opportunities, economic development, government affairs, public policy. The Tourism Bureau was established in 1987, almost 22 years ago. The organization is one that promotes and markets Hudson as a tourism destination. The Hudson Tourism Bureau promotes Hudson's assets as a whole. The goal is to increase overnight stays at lodging facilities, which in turn promotes economic impact by the tourists spending money in Hudson. So, have to forgive me for the logistics. I need just a little bit bigger table here. One of the things that I thought about when making this presentation, and I talked with my colleagues at the State Department of Tourism, and they asked me, what is Hudson's lure? What makes us special? And I think at the Tourism Bureau and probably in the community, we think it is the river. It's the St. Croix River, the National Scenic Riverway. Our brand at the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau is Spirit of the St. Croix. Other community assets are enhancements to our lure, arts, parks, attractions, shopping, restaurants, and so on. What I thought I would do right now is, just again, for the sake of the viewing audience, is to review a little bit as to what was presented to us and the community at the last meeting of the common council. Wisconsin State Room Tax Statute. Room tax funds, per the statute, must be spent on tourism promotion and development, defined as any of the following that are significantly used by transient tourists who are generally overnight guests at a lodging facility. That might include, or that will include, marketing projects, including advertising media buys, creation and distribution of printed or electronic tourist materials or recruitment, transient tourist information services, tangible municipal development, including convention centers, basically an investment in your community through tourism. Allocations prior to 1994, the statute says not less than 40% of the room tax funding shall be allocated to a Tourism Bureau. After 1994, not less than 70% state room tax allocations to go to a Tourism Bureau. Because our Tourism Bureau was established in 1987, we fall under the grandfather rule, and so we have the 40% rule of room tax allocation. Also, there were questions about, what is a tourism entity? As described, a nonprofit organization that came into existence before January 1st, 1992, and provides staff, development, or promotional services for the tourism industry in a municipality. In Hudson, the Chamber of Commerce proposed the room tax and has served as our local tourism entity since 1987, when the name was changed to the Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. Also, there is just a note up there that says, just a little bit about the Hudson Municipal Code that was adopted in 1987. Basically, that is just to tell you that we charge a 3% room tax in Hudson. The Wisconsin State law allows a community to charge up to 8% if so chooses. Room tax dollars use. Primary purpose of funds is to stimulate local economy with increased tourism or visitors to Hudson. No tax burden to Hudson area residents, to provide a long-term sustainable funding for the community tourism promotion as a whole. I wanted just to make sure to say that again. This is not a tax for you and I. This is a tax that is charged to the visitor, the tourist, the person staying at one of our lodging facilities. We are not raising taxes. Also, these funds are not new funds. These room tax dollars represent the same money, we're just asking that they be used for tourism promotion as the statute is intended. This next slide here basically shows you information about Hudson. Room tax in Hudson. Room tax collected and charged to the tourist staying at a lodging business within the city of Hudson at a rate of 3%. Currently receiving 40%, proposed to receive 70% per state statute. 400 hotel and B&amp;B rooms, 3% room tax. The estimate, and that's an estimate depending on lodging in a year, but the estimate for 2009 is $152,000 total. What this slide represents basically is an analysis of the funding that the Tourism Bureau received based on the room tax collections and an analysis of what could be in this proposal. 70% of the 152 comes to $106,400. However, I'm showing you the difference in some of the other funding that we received in 2008 at the Tourism Bureau. So we have the $60,000, which represents the 40% from last year. We also received $7,800 in chamber dues. We also received, actually, the city and the chambers split the cost of bringing the Walleye Tournament to town, so that was a one-time allocation of $67,500. And so if you subtract the two numbers there, before we talk about the Booster Fireworks, we have a difference of $21,850, which is the proposed or the estimate of the increased room tax spending dollars for next year. What I also wanted to do is show you a little bit about our two closest neighbors, River Falls and Stillwater, and show you in writing the proposed allocations that they both have accepted or approved. In Stillwater, 95% of all room tax dollars will go to their Tourism Bureau. They have 480 hotel and B&amp;B rooms. They are charging a 3% room tax rate, and the estimate is $192,000. River Falls is at 90% plus for all room tax dollar collections, 140 rooms and B&amp;B rooms, 5% room tax, and their 2008 estimate comes in at $82,200. Also in your packets, I did some research into other areas, both neighbors on both sides of the river, in addition to some other communities that have a similar historic river town feel. Red Wing, for example, has 400 rooms. They charge a 3% room tax. They collect $160,000, and that is managed by the Red Wing Visitors Bureau. New Richmond has 125 rooms. They have a 5% room tax, and they're estimating around $55,000 to be collected, and the New Richmond Chamber of Commerce and Convention Visitors Bureau will manage that. St. Croix Falls, 622 rooms, 3% room tax, $110,000. Menominee, 5%, $211,000. Chippewa Falls, 6%, $152,000, and so on. A couple others that I thought were noteworthy. In Galena, Illinois, it's close to where I grew up, 2,200 rooms, 11% room tax, and Duluth, just as a point of interest, is at 4,200 rooms. They charge a 13% room tax, and they collect $5 million a year. That's when you get into the categories, when you can use that third requirement, where you can actually build Convention and Visitors bureaus or convention centers to bring events to your community. I thought that was interesting, so, not that we'll get there, but it's an interesting note, I thought. The other thing I thought I should do for you and the viewing audience tonight, because of some of the questions I received last time at the meeting, is give you an example of economic impact on tourism in Hudson, based on our latest event that we did, Spirit of the St. Croix Days. So this event had a positive economic impact on the city of Hudson despite significant changes in the state of the economy and high gas prices when we decided we would do this in May of 2008 until the October event date. Spirit of the St. Croix Days. What impact a single event has on Hudson? We did some comparisons, and these comparisons, because you all, I think you all know that we did apply for a joint effort marketing grant from the State Department of Tourism in Wisconsin, and we did receive that. In order to qualify or to get the funding, we had to provide statistics based on their rules to provide credence for what we told them that we were going to be doing. If we compare the economic impact on Hudson from the numbers, the third weekend in October 2007 to the same weekend in 2008 during the event, an example of a local hotel in 2007 filled 67 rooms. In 2008, during this third weekend, they filled 90 rooms. Our website hit, just for those three days of the event, at the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau's website. In 2007, those same three days, in 2007, we had 38, 371 hits. In 2008, as a result of the event, we had 120,364 hits, just for those three days. That's a 68% increase based on that event. So then, using the state formula for value of overnight stays, dollars spent on gas, dining, shopping, and events during the third weekend in October, in 2007, the economic impact during that same timeframe was $162,873. In 2008, based on the same timeframe, the economic impact was $337,133. So we more than doubled that. Room tax dollar opportunities. Opportunity to increase visibility of the Hudson area through advertising, print, website, and other media. Increased collaboration with businesses engaged in tourism efforts. Ability to pursue niche markets. Opportunities through group travel, small conventions, business meetings, retreats. Basically, to promote all of our assets in the community. What I'd like to do now is show you just some examples of some of the projects and campaigns we've worked on this past year. This first picture here represents a collaboration between the Hudson Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau and one of our committees, Advertising Opportunities Group. Together, we pool our funding to get more impact in our advertising dollars. This represents a very classy and brand image type advertising that we did in Minnesota Monthly Magazine. We've done a lot of these. I'm only giving you one example, as to be respectful of your time. The next ad basically shows you the same basic theme. We're promoting other assets in the community in this theme. However, this one we did for the St. Croix Valley Regional Tourism Alliance. We belong to this alliance, which is a group of cities up and down the river, on both sides of the river, representing the river. And so, this is a partnership and impact advertising campaign that Hudson does with that entity. One thing I thought I should note at this time, we have local partnerships with committees. We have the regional partnerships with committees. In addition to the regional partnership, we have in the East Metro Twin City Market. In addition to that, we also have partnerships with the State Department of Tourism. I think I've mentioned before to you that I am a member of the Governor's Tourism Marketing Committee. I have been going down there six times a year on behalf of promotion and advertising and tourism for this part of the state. So through the State Department, we do have, as a Tourism Bureau, opportunities to request grants and co-op advertising, and that's through our affiliation with the Tourism Bureau. This particular flyer just shows another example of the Advertising Opportunities Group and their forward-thinking media campaign. The next slide here basically shows you a recap, a little bit, of some of the brochures that we have done at the Tourism Bureau. Passport to Hudson is our newest brochure. This one does a good job of explaining shopping, dining, attractions, and information about the community. We also do all kinds of event and festival brochures for different events we've done, posters and so forth. We also provide a historic walking tour brochure. We do a calendar of events for all of the different events happening in the community. We do a pad map for shopping, dining, and attractions. And we also keep updated the tourism kiosk in Lakefront Park. This next slide just shows you, it's hard to see, but it shows you the inside of the passport and talks about lodging. It talks about attractions and so forth. Some of the other events that, well, actually, I think we'll go into, I wanted to show you a snippet of our website as well. You'll see that our website does go into much detail about Hudson and attractions, events, area, resources, and the like. You'll notice at the bottom, there are hot links to our brochures, maps, calendar of events, parking scenarios, and so forth. Also, we include relocation information, which we handle on a regular basis. The events information here, the brochures and things you see here were specifically designed for Spirit of the St. Croix Days. However, over the years, we've done many different events. St. Croix Music and Art Festival, Autumn Taste Walk, Christmas Tour of Homes, Spirit of the St. Croix Days. We also collaborate with chamber committees and do events and work together with committees who run those events for May Fair, Hilltop Pumpkin Party, and the Celebrate the Holidays events. Also, we provide assistance, phone calls, web promotion, printed calendar of events with event chamber member organizations who are nonprofits. Hudson Hot Air Fair, Hudson Booster Days, North Hudson Pepper Festival. So really, the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau is truly the front door to the community. I was asked last time to provide some information about where we would spend the additional funding, and we've got some ideas for you here. In these first years, of course, the additional funding is, what I showed you was the $21,850, I believe was the number. So you can see some of the details that I have here add up to more than that, but I wanted you to know that we have a plan, and we have a plan for future. One of the first things we need to finish doing and do better at is Circle Wisconsin, which is the motor coach group tour market. We belong to that organization, but now we need to finalize our itineraries and promote our overnight stays, our attractions with the FIP Center for the Arts, the Octagon House, golf, dining, shopping, and so forth. I estimate the cost to do that program correctly at about $5,000. That includes our membership to the organization, promotional materials, trade show marketing, a marketing program, website enhancement, and postage. Another thing that we would love to do is go to a trade show for the Minnesota Meetings and Events, which is at the St. Prowl River City Center in December next year. A cost to have a booth and to man that would be around $1,500. Other ideas and other uses would be the Governor's Tourism Conference in March '09. That usually attracts 1,000 attendees. It's the largest tourism trade show in the U.S. The cost estimate to do that right is around $1,500. In addition, it would also be very smart of us to join the Wisconsin Convention and Visitors Bureau. Membership costs $1,500. The advantage of doing that is to connect with those folks who are looking for wonderful places to come and bring their groups and to stay overnight here. Other potential uses would be tourism packets, brochures, website mailings and mailings, quarterly advertising campaign, target advertising campaign. Midwest Living is a regional publication. We used that during Spirit of the St. Croix Days. We were able to use that because of our grant from the state, and we know the cost, $5,000, and it was one of our most outstanding lead generators and interest earners that we did for the event. Minnesota Monthly, in addition to the program that is in process, I propose to do a target campaign doing three one-third size ads at $6,000. We need to enhance our website to include tourism and travel itineraries. The latest push at the State Department of Tourism is electronic advertising. So by doing that, we can increase recognition through doing advertising on websites, for example, the Hudson Star Observer or TwinCities.com. There's also been some discussion with our Advertising Opportunities Group to enhance our Passport to Hudson and do programming that actually incorporates history and present and actually makes it kind of a activity to push tourism, tourists around the community. A couple of the long-range plans that we've looked into specifically lately, Discover Wisconsin is television advertising. This is the cost that was presented to the Tourism This is the cost that was presented to the Tourism Alliance. There are opportunities for Alliance members in different cities to split that cost, and that's because the Tourism Bureau has that connection. Also, we have a local member in town who does DVD production, and they are a high-level organization, and they were willing to work with the Tourism Bureau to the minimal expense of $28,000. So you can see that there's a lot of potential down the road as we increase our room tax collections and/or our hotel rooms. This is basically a summary. Hudson, a destination travel site. Market for the good of all tourism affiliates for Hudson. St. Croix River and environment, which we could highlight, boating, cruising tours, Lakefront Park, Willow River State Park, birding. All the festivals that we do, culinary, it's a big push at the State Department of Tourism. We have fabulous restaurants here, and we were also very successful with the Spirit of the St. Croix days Taste of Hudson event. Arts, culture, and historical sites, promoting the FIP Center for the Arts. Arts and cultural events, the Octagon House, Historic Downtown Hudson. And of course, the sporting events that we are lucky enough to have here. All of these entities are promoted as a whole by a Tourism Bureau promoting the community with the ultimate goal of economic impact in the community and by putting heads in beds, which is the true sense of the room tax. So in conclusion of my presentation, the Hudson Area Tourism Bureau, the Tourism Bureau and Chamber of Commerce are the front door to the community and is the first point of contact for business and tourism. Hudson Area Tourism Bureau is the best organization to use room tax dollars to stimulate local economy through increased tourism. Now if you'll allow me, the presentation is done, but I have a few comments that I would like to say to both you, the council, and to the viewing audience. In summary, the primary purpose of room tax is to increase the number of overnight visitors to Hudson as measured by the increase in occupancy rates at local lodging establishments on a year-to-year basis. The primary benefit of collecting these funds is to stimulate the local economy through increased tourism or visitors to the area. The Tourism Bureau will use these funds to position the area to reap the benefits of the projected increase in the tourism industry, basically an investment in our community. Tourism promotes economic development in several ways. Travelers inject money into local economies through spending on lodging, food, recreation, transportation, fuel, and retail businesses. You saw the examples of just one event. The travel industry is a service-oriented and labor-intensive industry providing jobs for community. The promotion of visitor amenities can have other beneficial effects in a community. Many of the same attributes that draw visitors to a community, recreation, culture, events, attractive downtowns, can also enhance the quality of life for residents. Promoting tourism amenities and quality of life also can enhance opportunities to attract employers who come to our community as a visitor. Additional benefits might be no tax burden to local residents. This is a visitor tax paid by visitors staying in lodging facilities. We should use room tax for tourism promotion as the state statute intended. Provide overall coordinated marketing effort of the Hudson area by an established Tourism Bureau that has been established since 1987. Provide a long-term sustainable funding stream for tourism promotion. Opportunity to increase visibility of the Hudson area through advertising, print, website, and other media. Making us competitive with our neighboring communities, that's a concern I have. Ability to pursue niche market opportunities, including group travel, small conventions, business meetings, retreats, nature lovers, and the like. Opportunity to participate in matching grant and cooperative advertising programs through the state. As a Tourism Bureau, we have that opportunity, and that's a very important opportunity to add additional funding streams if we apply for those grants and work together. Remember, this is using room tax money for what it was intended, tourism promotion. This is not a tax increase. So then, in conclusion, this is the end of my presentation. Thank you for your patience. In conclusion, we are asking at the Tourism Bureau for 70% room tax to be allocated to the existing Hudson Area Tourism Bureau. Per state statute requirements, an annual report of spending will be made to the Hudson Common Council or as required. In 2009, this is a bullet point that has arisen from concerns from our last council meeting, and we have addressed that. In 2009, the Tourism Bureau is willing to grant $4,000 to the FIP Center for the Arts and $2,500 to the Hudson Hot Air Fair. John Potter and I have met and discussed this at length, and I would like to read a statement from the FIP Center. The FIP Center would support any plan that would provide the same level of room tax funding that it received in 2008. So if you remember, last meeting, there was, with the 30% remaining of a room tax allocation that the city was going to allocate, there was a subset that said Culture, Arts, Beautification. And at that time, you talked about granting $4,000 to the FIP Center for the Arts and some others. And so, for 2009, the Tourism Bureau is willing to match that grant. And then after that, the Tourism Bureau grant process and procedure will be completed by the Chamber and Tourism Board for applications in 2010. I thought it was important for you also to hear that the Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau Board and Tourism Committee consists of your peers and represents community members from business, from lodging, retail, attractions, and restaurants. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kim. Any of the council members have questions for Kim before she sits down? All right, thank you. So if I'm understanding you correctly, then what you said is that from the proposal that I had made where the allocation to the FIPS would be split into two parts, $4,000 for a straight grant from the city for culture and the arts, and then any remaining money to be handled as a grant from the city to the Tourism Bureau, and then the Tourism Bureau would make allocations on from there, and you said that you're willing to grant $4,000 to the FIP Center for 2009 and $2,500 to the Hot Air Fair. Is that what you were saying? I know there are a couple other proposals here. Let me make a suggestion for how we might go forward. Let's take about 20 minutes to hear from the council. Lori gets five. Well, if you don't like this, we can change it. And then we'll take about 15 or 20 from the audience. Do you want to hear from them before you speak? Do you want to hear from them before you speak? Then we'll do it that way. Anyone who wants to come up? I'm going to break this up into about approximately 15 minutes. Why don't you come up to the lectern, state your name and your address, and we'll try to limit you to each around two minutes, I think. It looks like there's about 15 or 20 people here. Does that sound good?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tom Redner. I live in Hudson, Wisconsin. I am a former mayor myself. Tonight, I am the first half of a tag team, if you will. My successor is the other half. First off, I don't represent any one organization. I'm here as a former mayor representing all of the citizens of Hudson. And I have to start out with a little bit of negative. To say that you aren't comfortable in making decisions about these community subsidies or saying that nonprofits shouldn't get the funds, you're not facing the job that you were elected to do. That's why you were put at this table, to make these hard decisions. All of the organizations on the list are nonprofits. Even the FIP Center, the Chamber, the Tourism Bureau. From my perspective, you seem to be confusing two issues. And if you separate them, I think that it'll help you focus and resolve the actual, I think, the simple issue which you are facing. The first issue is the room tax, which is income. The state in the mid-'80s passed a statute which allowed the city to charge a room tax, and that became part of the general fund. The only stipulation on that, which the city of Hudson is still grandfathered in under, is that 40% of that money collected in that year must go towards tourism or tourist-related activities. The other 60% is to be dealt with as the city wishes. That's the first issue. The second issue is community subsidy allocation, whether it's for tourism or for other community subsidies. Now, community subsidies have been around a lot longer than the room tax. Each year, back in the mid-'80s and prior to that, and I can't address anything beyond '94, but back then, each year, the city clerk would send a letter to all of the various community organizations, asking them if they wished to apply for a community subsidy or reapply for a community subsidy, had they gotten one in the past, and if so, how much did they wish and what were they going to use it for? The council at budget time would sit down with all of the response letters and decide up or down who got subsidies and how much they would get. The use of the room tax in place of actual tax allocation, property tax allocation, would help in keeping track and placing these community subsidies under the outgoing from the room tax which was collected. It helped keep track of all of this. Many of these expenses helped the various citizens of Hudson and the city itself. The Booster Club payment, for example, goes towards youth programs and also towards the annual Fourth of July fireworks. Are you going to eliminate the fireworks? That's part of the uniqueness of the city of Hudson. The senior citizens run the meals on wheels, taking maybe the only good hot meal of a day to a shut-in or an elderly. Are you going to eliminate the subsidy to the Senior Citizen Center and eliminate the meals on wheels? The Cemetery Association subsidy. The Cemetery Association has one job and one job only. And if you eliminate the Cemetery Association subsidy, guess what? The cemetery care and maintenance falls back on the city. And you're going to have to hire people to maintain and care for the cemetery, which is going to cost a whole lot more than the subsidy we're talking about to the Cemetery There's many other organizations and needs, and they have earned a place on the list. Like I say, this is what makes Hudson such a unique place and a great place to live. The FIP Center is a definite tourist attraction. However, they still are a nonprofit, but they have easier access to other sources of income. If you're going to maybe trim, they might be a candidate. I'm not saying they should, but they might be. I feel, and I appreciate Kim's presentation, but I feel that the Chamber of Commerce and the Tourism Bureau subsidy should be reviewed very, very carefully. The Chamber and the Bureau are overlapped to the point that they are basically one organization. Their name is a single name, the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. Tax money going to this organization could be misspent on Chamber members-only activities rather than on true tourism activity. How is this council going to ensure that this does not happen? Because that's your responsibility. The Bureau must be for the benefit of all tourism activities in the city. The Chamber activities are for their members. These two are conflicted. Perhaps they should be totally separated. The Tourism Bureau should be a totally separate entity. Now, my successor, Jack Brohl, also has some thoughts on the use of the room tax dollars, which I think you should consider before you vote. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, are we going to limit to two minutes, or are we going to give everybody five minutes?
Well, as a current mayor, I can tell you, you have a hard time limiting me when I get going, so I'd say, let's just let them talk.
Yeah, why start now?
Why start now? So, you know, they'll do their best.
Okay.
And thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'm here tonight not representing any particular recipient, but all of them in common. Now, you ladies and gentlemen have just finished your budget. And quite frankly, the budget has been really gifted, as far as you're concerned, because of the TIFT. Now, the people who are recipients of the room tax don't have any lobbyists. They aren't here. Tom and I got together, and I'm not going to repeat anything that Tom said, but quite frankly, they put their budgets together anticipating that they would receive some of the money that they have in the past. Each and every one of those are now probably going to get a letter saying, you're not going to get anything, or you're going to get a reduction of what you had before. Now what are they going to do? What would you people do if the state said, hey, you're not going to get any money from the state? Suddenly, it's a crisis. What I'm saying, if you're going to do something with these recipients, at least try to wean them off easily, because this is an economic crisis. Where are they going to get that money that they've been receiving from room tax over the years? Now, I work closely with Kim, and she's done a fantastic job with the monies that she received, a fantastic job, and put Hudson on the map. And I'm certainly not saying, let's take anything away from that. But I do have to remind the council, some of you were here during my days and some of you weren't. But the state statute said, give 40% to tourism. The 60% you can use for additional tourism, which we did in conjunction with Kim on a lot of situations. But other things that we used for the room tax that maybe you don't recall was we did the riprapping on the dike. Now, I hope you have a big contingency group or fund this year, because once you give it away, you're not going to get it. We also had donations to the YMCA, if you remember that. We had the hockey and their New Zealand visit and how they represented Hudson, hoping that that whole thing will come back to Hudson. We did some work on the volleyball courts. The playground at Grand View, which was a big deal. All money from room tax that was not a tax situation as far as the taxpayer. Corky's Pier, the flower baskets watering, the park benches on the dike, decorative lights on the walkway from the bathhouse to St. Croix. Other special products, $7,800 to the Chamber of Commerce, which if you, well, I guess you're not going to take that away. Trolley cars for special events. We did some work there. The Walleye Tournament, the Hot Air Fair. As a matter of fact, the Chamber dropped the Hot Air Fair a few years ago, and fortunately, we had some money to continue that, and it's probably one of the biggest events to be held in Hudson. And as Tom mentioned, the fireworks display as well. So if you're going to do- So if you're going to do something, let's not be too drastic. Let's take a weaning approach. Let's make sure that these people know where you're coming from. But I do have a suggestion. If you keep the sixty percent and give forty to tourism, you also have a new motel that's coming in, which I understand has about six hundred rooms. Why not suggest to the Tourism Bureau that they take all of the room tax from this new motel? That way, you can keep sixty, continue some of the things that we do with room tax, still have forty percent for the existing Tourism Bureau, and when the six hundred rooms come on, give all of that to the Tourism Bureau. With that, I hope that you do have a little background that maybe you didn't have before. We have been using this approach for the last ten years. I think that by keeping the taxes low, and I want to remind everybody that for the last ten years, there's only five other cities in the state of Wisconsin that had a lower tax rate, city tax, than Hudson. So let's keep it up. I know you're doing a great job. Thank you very much for my time and taken in consideration.
Before you sit down, thank you to Mayor Redner for your comments, and it was good to see you here again tonight, and Mayor Brohl for your comments. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank you publicly for all your time and efforts in developing the St. Croix Business Park and bringing the Tax Increment District Number Four into its inception through its development and to the point that we closed it. The taxpayers got a tax statement in the mail today that showed a tax decrease for all of them, and, you know, I've said it repeatedly here and made no bones about it, but I'm glad to have you here to be able to thank you, the previous councils, your other members that have served on the Business Park with you, on the Business Park Corporation with you. You did a fantastic job.
Well, I appreciate that. No man's an island. Everybody had certainly done a lot of work. The council did a fantastic job, and our committee people did a fantastic job, and we continue to do that. We have two prospects on the new St. Croix Business Park East, and we hope that that develops very soon, so we'll continue to bring money into the city coffers, but please be lenient with the recipients. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard on this issue? Going once?
Can I make a comment?
You may.
Just to address a couple of things, certainly I appreciate both of your comments because you're right. I mean, we are very lucky to live in this community. We're very lucky to have had such success with many different entities. But what I'd like to remind you is that the purpose of room tax is for tourism promotion as a whole in a community. That's why the statute was revised, and that's why it was revised again in two thousand and six, basically to offer a funding source for tourism promotion in a community to keep a community competitive. I do also want to remind the audience that last meeting, there were several reports on allocations to some, all of these worthy organizations who have received room tax in the past. A proposal was made with the thirty percent to continue with a city beautification project line item, which included the holiday lighting, city banners, and flower baskets and the like. There was also line item items that the city would keep, which would be the Historic Society with the Octagon House, Miss Hudson, Ban Shell Concert Series, the FIPS, the VFW, the Hudson Senior Center, and the cemetery. Those things were not proposed to be cut in the last proposal that was reviewed. The FIPS, the Hockey Association, and the Hot Air Fair was proposed to move to the Tourism Bureau for granting, which I've offered to do. And then other subsidies, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and Community Action was talked about a phase-out period. So your concerns were certainly thought of and addressed. Absolutely, we have worked great together, and we've received actually more than the forty percent, as Jack alluded to, because we work together for the, for the good of the community. The other thing, too, that I guess we just need to remember as we think of this is the true sense of what the statute is for. The concern about the Chamber of Commerce blending funds with the Tourism Bureau, I can understand that concern. I do want you to hear again that I'm governed by a Board of Directors and a Tourism Committee that will keep an eye on that. I also want you to know that you're really lucky that the Tourism Bureau is housed by the Chamber of Commerce, because we share staff, we share rent, we share postage, we share phone calls. We're the front door to the community. We help the city with their phone call situations. It's a really a win-win situation, and until such time that we actually have enough funding to have a separate entity and a tourism director a hundred percent of the time, I think our best use of funds is to share that resource and to share that opportunity with the two entities. So with the reporting that's required by state statute and the requirement to report to the Common Council, you will see where the funding is being spent, and I can assure you it will be spent appropriately. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Maybe your last chance. I think I'll open it up to the floor. Could I, if I could, why don't you give me about thirty seconds? I'd just like to answer a couple of points. One was that the boosters, Hudson boosters actually haven't been getting any money for some time. We have been paying for the fireworks, but we pay that directly to the fireworks company so that we don't really help the Booster Club at all. They haven't been getting any money, but we have been paying for the fireworks, and my suggestion was that we should continue. I've heard three other suggestions. No one has suggested that we should change the fireworks support. The Hudson Cemetery has, I have talked with Mr. Steele, that's the president of that board, and looked at their financials. The two years, most recent years, they did run a surplus. One of those years, their surplus actually exceeded what we had given them. They aren't in a financial situation that would make you think they're likely to fail. There's no reason for the only cemetery in town to fail, but despite that, my suggestion in my original proposal was that we continue to support them. My, my last proposal was that that support would go from five thousand dollars last year to four thousand dollars. This year, I suggested that we limit all those groups to a maximum of four thousand dollars for culture, history, and the arts. And I think there is the historic part on the west side of Ninth Street, that historic part of the cemetery isn't generating any revenue, and yet it is a bit of Hudson history that really deserves our support, and it's on that basis that I think we ought to continue to support them. The Senior Citizens Meals on Wheels component of what they do is actually funded through a county department. They fund similar operations around the county. We're the only community that gives other tax dollars of this magnitude to them, and it goes to other things, other, other, I went and talked with them about this and got the whole spiel. I think it's worthy. It, it is enrichment events, entertainment events, crafting, different things that are going on in addition to that core function of the Meals on Wheels. Meals on Wheels won't go away even if we had a budget crisis and, and couldn't fund it. But my suggestion was that they should go from four thousand five hundred and fifty to four thousand. And in response to the idea that these groups have no lobbyists, that's because you're not sitting in my chair anymore. They do. They do have lobbyists.
They can only have one mayor.
Ah, that's right. Okay, who wants to be first? We got two proposals, one from Mr. Wyland, one from Ms. Bernard. Do you wish to do your?
I just need to start by saying my presentation is not nearly as artistic as the one that you just saw from the Tourism Bureau. I hope to keep it brief and simple and touch on all the key points. I'm going to skip through some of it that's already been repeated, but one key point in this plan is that it does keep the room tax rate at three percent, but it maximizes the tourism value that we get from those dollars. It relies on percentages, not absolute dollars. It seems sort of strange to be talking about which organization will get how many dollars when from year to year our total budget changes. I think we need to talk about how we're going to allocate those dollars in terms of percentages. My plan keeps politicians out of the process. I think it's really important that when we are allocating dollars to non-city entities or agencies, that it be transparent, that it be objective, that it not be turned into a political arm twisting or wrestling match. I think it's key that those grants be decided outside of elected officials. And then finally, it's targeted to benefit city residents and tourists alike. And it's very simple. Our room tax dollars would just fall into the following formula. Tourism Bureau allocation, city beautification is B, that would be twenty to thirty percent, and G is Events and Activities Grants, not to exceed ten percent. I am saying at this point that the Tourism Bureau would get seventy percent. Obviously, we can discuss whether those are the right numbers. Under the Tourism Bureau, I really feel like that they do the best job of advertising our city as a whole. We as a city are not equipped in the same way they are. They have connections, they have the ability to get matching grants. I'd like to see them increase their advertising capability. I'd like to see them get into new media markets. And the city gems that we talk about, the Octagon House, the FIP Center for the Arts, other area attractions, are all going to get a boost if the Tourism Bureau gets a boost in dollars. And we saw earlier from Kim what some of those plans are. City beautification is the next part of the equation. I said twenty to thirty percent. I think it's important to remember while these are not tax dollars, to speak, from our city residents, once we've given the requisite dollars to Tourism Bureau, whether it's forty percent, seventy percent, or something in between, that the dollars that are remaining are dollars that could be offsetting general fund expenses. So while they weren't collected from our city residents, they certainly could be used to offset current city expenses. So I think we need to keep that in mind when we start doling them out to various agencies. So the city beautification projects, they have a dual effect. Tourists are going to enjoy them, and our city residents are going to enjoy them. They're free and accessible to all our city residents, and some that I've listed are the fireworks, concerts in the park, banners, many that we've talked about. Includes a cemetery, includes holiday lighting. I see Miss Hudson and the VFW as city ambassadors in many respects, and I think that's something that we need to continue to support. So the final portion of the formula is what I consider Events and Activities Grants, and this is, would not exceed ten percent of the total dollars collected. Few specifics about these grants. Any nonprofit organization in the city could apply for them. I did a quick search on the IRS site, and there's at least fifty-six registered nonprofits in the city of Hudson. So this would include boosters, community action, Operation Help, Hudson Hockey, the FIPS, the list goes on. Here's the key, and it's something different, and I'm sure will generate some discussion. These grants would be generated for the purpose of funding specific events and activities to be held within the city. These aren't my crazy ideas. These are ideas that I found on other city websites and how they've granted funds to various agencies. A board of seven to nine members outside of this body would review grant applications, would make a final recommendation to finance in a full council. Leaves politics out of it. It lets a more objective discussion take place. Those recommendations would come back here. We can talk about timing of the grant application, but it would be an annual thing. The same agencies could apply year after year. One key point, and I feel real strongly about this, is that the event or activity that's funded by this grant needs to be free, and it needs to be accessible to all city residents. If we are going to take tax dollars that could be used to defer general fund expenses, we better make sure that all city residents can potentially benefit from those dollars. I said annual grants not to exceed three thousand. I saw various numbers, but that was one that seemed like if we have about fifteen thousand, which is ten percent of our current room tax fund, that would mean about five agencies could get, could get funded. And then I just did a quick sketch of what two thousand nine and two thousand and ten could look like. In this case, we haven't gone to seventy percent. The Tourism Bureau is at sixty percent, with Chamber dues at five percent. City beautification, I had a twenty-five percent, and I included the numbers that we worked with at our last meeting. Activities and Events Grants would be ten percent, or about fifteen thousand. That changes a little bit for two thousand and ten, where the Tourism Bureau is up to seventy percent. Our city beautification fund is down to about twenty-one, and grants are at nine percent. This is quick, but the point is to get the discussion maybe moved in a different direction where we're talking about the, the types of areas that we want to fund with these dollars. Instead of talking about specific agencies, they can apply through the grants, ten percent that's available. But I don't think we've left anything off here. I think we've just moved it into a slightly different area where hopefully politics can no longer be a part, not completely, but at least in the decision-making process and choosing who gets those grants. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Lee? Yeah, also. Okay. Yeah, you've got to work down through it. We have some, some places that we, some good crossover places here. I also looked at this as a, as a stepwise process between two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, where in two thousand and nine, the Chamber of Commerce would receive sixty percent, which is really hard to read up there, but nice presentation, by the way, Lori. We're sixty, sixty percent in two thousand and nine, going up to seventy percent in two thousand and ten.
We can adjudge, we certainly can make copies after the meeting or in the future for anybody that wants to.
Some of the things that I did as we walked down through here was I agree that things like holiday lighting, the Fourth of July fireworks, city of Hudson Fourth of July fireworks should stay on there, the Cemetery Association, the flower baskets, things we just talked about. I, the difference I would see in two thousand and ten, or two thousand and nine in balancing some of these budgets, there's certain things here that don't have to be paid through tourism who could easily be paid through the, through the general budget. So we could simply move to do some balancing here. As was pointed out before, the Cemetery Association, our upkeep and maintenance of that does not necess, doesn't have to be a tourism dollar item. It can be a general budget item through Public Works, so we can move some of this funding around. Moving, so I broke this down into city beautification projects, my highlights, support for history, cultures, and arts, and support for non-art, culture, and history, different, different kinds of activities. I also said in here, in two thousand and ten, we moved to a granting process that is required, that says that you have to come with your proposal. The outside Board of Review, I think that's an interesting idea. I think that's something we could certainly add here I hadn't considered. So moving down through here, I said, in two thousand and nine, the Historic Society, Miss Hudson, the Ban Shell Series, FIPS, and for the Arts, and VFW would be continued to be supported at their current rate in two thousand and nine. Two thousand and ten, we go to that granting process. And here I use the same philosophy you did in, in saying, this category of history, culture, and arts would be granted fifteen percent of the overall budget, again, because it changes each year, right? And the granting process would be thus, that way. Same thing here, in two thousand and nine, we go for Big Brothers and Big Sisters Hockey Association. In this idea that we can't just tell people, you're done, and take it away. I, I think that that's a, for many reasons, we shouldn't, I don't believe we should do that. So in each of these organizations, we go to a fifty percent allocation. The total allocation then becomes a certain percentage of the overall budget. In this case, I said ten percent, goes to non-culture, art, history. So when it's broken down into two categories, each one is funded at a different level. And then each year, we can go through that granting process. I like Mayor Redner's approach to bringing in the, using these funds for local support and local and local activities. In 2010, you'll see then, I, I've identified some other items that could also be funded through the general public, general fund, because it does apply to the entire public, like the holiday lighting, like the Fourth, the flower baskets, things like that could then be part of Public Works instead of part of these tourism dollars, leaving us more funding for these other granting areas. I think everybody's seen that. Let's see, was anything else I want to say? Oh, one of the things that I did say, city of Hudson has a long history of using room tax dollars to provide grants for different organizations, and I think we should continue to do that. The...
Paul, can you switch off the screen, please?
I did remove the, in my proposal here, I removed the payment to the Chamber of Commerce because I'm having a hard time validating, if I'm a business and I'm part of the Chamber of Commerce, I get direct value from that contribution and that membership. So in here, I'm saying, well, if I'm going to increase, the money goes to the Tourism Bureau, which is an entity that's working for the city. I reallocated those funds someplace else in my budget here. You can see some of my other comments there. So it sounds like we have some commonalities with our, with our proposals. There's some ideas here that we could join, different approaches.
Thank you. I'd like to be next.
I'd like to make a motion.
Well, since I offered, everyone would get to speak. Let me ask if either of the two of you want to speak before we have a motion?
No, I have a, I'd like to speak. Just asking, or question on the proposals, is that okay to do at this time?
I think so.
Lee, on your, on your proposal, your, on one of your bullet point points, you said you also see I pulled funding for the Chamber. I have not seen where the city receives any benefits from being a member of its own Chamber, especially if they're also a tourism.
Right, because we're already providing contributions through the tourism donations, or tourism monies.
You don't believe that the Chamber is a viable or a good benefit to the city of Hudson?
No, I didn't say that. What I said...
You said, let me finish then.
Okay.
I do not see where the city receives any benefits from being a member of its own Chamber.
Maybe I should have said as a business does, is what, what I was equating it to.
So as the business of the city of Hudson, you don't see any for our employees to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce?
What I was looking at was, if I'm a business member, which I am, and a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I do get direct benefits. Now, as a city, I'm saying, it's over, it's overarching. What it does is support the businesses of the city and the marketing efforts. Now, I'm also a member of that as the city, of the Tourism Bureau. I see my, my city dollars as tourism dollars are the ones that promote the city, if you will, where the Chamber dollars promote the businesses. So to me, it's a reallocation of funds. There's not a direct benefit as a business member, but there's a direct benefit as a tourism member.
Well, and, yes, but do you have other?
No. I, I just totally disagree with that. I think it's a, it's a real benefit for us to be a member of the Chamber as a city of Hudson. I think it's an organization worthwhile supporting, and I believe we can have our employees attend training sessions and programs that are offered by the Chamber. So I strongly disagree with that, and I think it's a real benefit to be a member of our Chamber.
There is a business development, economic development function of the Chamber that's outside of tourism. That being said, there is a fee schedule for what the dues would be, and we have paid more than the scheduled amount for years as part of giving additional support to them. And when we first started talking about this, I said to Kim, well, what would we pay if we paid like everyone else based on, I guess, what is it, size of the number of employees? It is in the range of $2,500. So my proposal was to lower it down to that, but really, it doesn't, it's, it's, we're going to give a certain amount of money over to them. You can decide whatever it is. Do you have anything else to say?
No.
The only thing I just wanted the viewing audience to be clear on is that cities are members of chambers of commerce everywhere. And the reason they are is for what you just said. It's like economic development, public policy, educational programming, and the like. The other thing that you're forgetting is that, I don't know what the number is, and I could find it for you. Every day, we take calls on behalf of you, the city. Where people call us and ask for this, that, this, that, and the other thing. And we, if we were to field all those questions back up here, I think you would find that your, your, your dues are well worth it, because we are the other city entity, and believe me, we get a lot of calls on your behalf. So I would, I would really strongly discourage you from a statement saying that the city should not belong to a Chamber of Commerce.
Well, and if, and if, I guess what I was looking at was what tasks are performed by the, by the Chamber of Commerce on behalf of the city? And if it is, if you are operating as the receptionist, I mean telephone calls, I mean, those are the...
And that goes both ways, back and forth, in the city and the Chamber. We have, we field a lot of calls down here, for whatever reason.
A lot of times, I think it's just directory assistant, it's not quite knowing where to send people.
The bottom line is we're working together, and it's of value. It's a value to you, and it's a value to us. We're stronger together. And whether, if, if you feel so inclined to take your membership dues out of a different bucket, I am fine with that. But it's really a challenge for me to hear that a city doesn't feel importance of a Chamber of Commerce, because you can, you can talk to any other chamber entity throughout the U.S., and that would be rebutted.
I think there's a couple of things. Thank you, Kim. In, in Lori's proposal, Cemetery was cut from 5,000 to 2,500. Or 4,000 to 2,500. And the Ms. Hudson was cut from 2,500 to 2,000. In Lee's proposal, again emphasizing this is all general fund dollars. If we didn't give these to these private charities, very worthy private organizations, we could be spending them on other city functions. In Lee's proposal, he's transferring $5,000 of what we have been spending from the tourism dollars over to general for this year, I believe, right? 5,000 would go into, in other words, we got to find $5,000 somewhere else in the budget, Lee.
Right. It would go in the Cemetery Association.
And then for next year, that 5,000 becomes 19,000, where we give away the money, but then we're going to have to find it somewhere else in the budget to continue to do what we're doing. The other comment I have for you on that is the holiday lighting was budgeted at 4,000. We've gone significantly over budget on that the last two years running, including this year. It ran about, I think, 6,800 would be the best estimate as of after the November bill, prorating out what it looks like December will cost. So when I put down going from 4,000 to 7,000, that wasn't that we were going to do more lighting or improved lighting. That's really just budgeting for what we've been doing. Floor is open for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion at this time. We've already spent well over an hour discussing this, and, and all, all we've done is just do the preliminaries. And I think that it would be unrealistic to think that we're going to come to any conclusion tonight. The last five minutes are an excellent example of that. And I would move at this time that the mayor appoint an ad hoc committee consisting of these two members of the, of finance and others, as the mayor sees fit, to hold a meeting that anyone can attend to reconcile these differences. There are some very ground-level stuff that has not been accomplished. Lori, we don't have a printed version of your proposal, so I can't possibly vote yes or no on it. It's missing. We need to air these in, in a public forum, but not take everybody's time while we do so. Because I think we need to go through a winnowing process of finding out what are the points we agree on? Because there are going to be some points we agree on. What do we disagree on? And then how do we work those out? And I think that would be the best use of everyone's time. So I would like to see that process take place, rather than us talk about this for another hour or more, because we are not going to be able to vote meaningfully on it tonight. It's a very long motion, and I apologize.
Oh, I'm going to condense it for you. Tell me if I'm misstating. The motion is to appoint a committee and to refer this matter to the committee for further study.
Yes. Public meetings of the committee.
Is there a second to the motion?
Is there a time sensitivity to this? I mean, the first room tax that'll come in for 2009 will be at the end of March. Usually allocations then happen in April. That's usually the schedule that takes place.
Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Is there anyone else who'd like to offer a motion?
I have a second motion.
Well, let me ask if, if anyone else does.
I'd like to make a motion that, that we decide this evening, if at all possible, what we're going to do with $2,009, and that we further discuss for 2010, something like along the lines of what you suggested, that a committee meet, whether it's to review a grant process or the specific details. But I think there's enough agreement and some commonality between what Kim presented, what Lee did, what I did, that we could come up with something for 2009.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, last time you proposed a compromise.
I did.
Yes, and...
I've got a further compromise.
Well, I, I would like to make a motion that we accept, I don't know, you, oh, you had a motion to...
Yeah, we have no second to it. Do you have a motion?
What was the motion? So the motion is just that we, and maybe it's not a motion, it's a suggestion. We plan for 2009 tonight. We come to a conclusion for where dollars are going to be allocated for 2009, and that a subcommittee or some group further reviews the process for 2010 and brings it back to finance.
Point of information, all we can discuss is 2009. This is part of the 2009 budget.
I understand that, Scott. I understand that. But my point is, we can look at the process for 2010 and bring that proposal back to finance.
Well, I think you both have valid points. We can't bind a future council, and there will be a new council here in 2010, but we often do long-range planning and lay out a path, and they can choose to follow it or not. In this case, if it was a sensible path, after lots of public input, I'm guessing it would be largely followed. So it's just like your original motion here was actually fairly similar, only wanted to delay and do it rather than do it here.
Alan, do you have, do you have a, do you have a new proposal that I didn't think you were going to bring forward tonight? But if you have a new proposal, do you have it, so we can look at it? Or do you have the old proposal that we can look at? Is this version A?
Well, I don't know what version this is, Alan. For me, it's version three. And what I've done is, it's a phased allocation to the Tourism Bureau that would be 60 percent for 2009, with the intention to go to 65 percent in, in 2010. And then the direct tourism support by the, by the city would continue, albeit in some different amounts. I'd propose boosted fireworks, 10,000. Banshell concert to be reduced slightly from 5,700 to 5,000. The PIPs would get two payments here. 2,500 for tourism support, and then later 4,500 for culture and the arts. Hot Air Fair would get their 2,500 directly from the city. Ms. Hudson would get the 2,500 directly from the city. The holiday lighting goes down to 6,000. We're going to have to shut off some of the lights more in order to cut the electricity bill there. I'm not sure how we'll do that. It's beautiful downtown, but it has become expensive to run those lights. The city banner fund would be decreased slightly. Flower baskets would be continued. The Historical Society would go from 5,000 to 4,500. All these, in, all these groups then would go to a maximum of $4,500 for culture and the arts. The Octagon House, 4,500. The PIPs, 4,500. The Senior Center, 4,500. The Cemetery, 4,500. For a few of those, that's a slight decrease, a 10 percent decrease. The VFW, 1,000. The Hockey Association would go down to 2,500. You know, it was mentioned earlier that we've supported the YMCA in the past. It's true. We also supported the Soccer Association with the Field of Dreams. It's true. And we started again with the hockey when they were building their big construction project. But none of these three went on forever. We didn't continue to support the Y, and we didn't continue to support the Soccer Association. And to be honest with you, though you'd expect there'd been a lot of hue and outcry from the Hockey Association, I don't know how it's been for you, but I don't think they really expected that would continue forever. And so this is a phased decrease for them. Big Brothers, Big Sisters would continue to be phased down 50 percent from where they were from 2,000 to 1,000. And Community Action would be phased down 50 percent from 5,000 to 2,500. That balances out with $300 left, and that's a little bit of pain for everybody, including the city. We're going to have to figure out what to do with the lights downtown. The Chamber's not going to get what I wanted them to get, which was 70 percent for tourism. The PIPs isn't going to get what they wanted to get, which was 8,000, any way, shape, or form. I don't care how it comes, but I want the whole 8,000. They won't get it. They would get 7,000. This is what I call the distributed pain plan for everybody. But we're moving in a stepwise fashion to get more tourism spending.
Dean, why the 65 percent? Why not?
Well, it's 60 for 2009 and 65 for 2010, and it's just as both the former mayors said, wouldn't it be better if you phased this down a little bit? And this is, basically, this is a stepwise plan. I think you could then go the next year up to 70 percent if you wanted to.
2011 would be, could potentially be 70.
So you're, so it's, it's morph, if you see what I did down under the culture and the arts block, the max for 2009 was 4,500. In 2010, the max was 4,000. And so you're sort of laying down a path that these groups are going to have to get used to the idea that there's a, I think I wrote down Mayor Bro's suggestion was wean them. And this is a weaning plan. That wouldn't be drastic for, well, it is, it is distributed pain for everyone, but it is achieving the goal of spending more on tour, on tourism development and support. I calculate all told, if you count the category of direct city spending here of 22,000, and the Chamber spending, that we are increasing our tourism spending fairly significantly, about 15 or percent or so.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to move that we, we approve the 2009 numbers that are shown here. And that we, when the new council is established this spring, that we immediately convene a subcommittee, as Scott had suggested, to review the process, so that if we're moving to a granting process for 2010, that we get that in place, so it can happen in the fall. I don't want to approve anything to do with the 2010 numbers here, because I, I'll leave my motion at that.
Well, can you read back the motion?
She made a motion that we approve the 2009 numbers as presented, and in the spring, after the new council is in place... And in the spring, after the new council is in place, get a committee to process the applications for 2010 so they'll be ready in the fall to do their budgets.
Just, I guess what I want when the new committee's established, or the new council's established, is that we then determine, how are we going to proceed for 2010? We shouldn't get to the end of every year and go, who's going to get the money? How much are they going to get? We need something in place so that when budget time comes next fall, we know exactly what we're going to do.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion because as I was looking at my 2010, that's the same direction. I wanted to go some sort of granting plan and process.
Any discussion on the motion, Scott?
No, I'm glad to hear my thoughts crystallized by other people.
Parts of them.
That's good. This is a one-year experiment, and that's all it is. It's just one year. And what I have uppermost in my mind is that, right now, 60% of the room tax dollars are just general fund dollars. And we have to realize, as Kim said, and I wrote it down, it isn't, the tax, the tourism dollars are an investment in our community. Now, investments have to have return. And if we have $60,000, let us say, that we can use to beautify our parks, to improve our streets, improve our sidewalks, make our town more attractive, and not have our taxpayers pay for that, it's paid for by room tax, I have to balance that with, is giving the money to tourism instead going to return to us more than that $60,000 so that we can then improve our parks, improve our streets and sidewalks? And we're going to, excuse me, we're going to have to evaluate that at the end of next year because we will, we have not been getting the annual report as demanded by state statute. We are now going to start getting, which I think is a very positive move. But we're taking room tax dollars and giving them in an investment, which I don't have a problem with, because I want to see how that investment turns out. But those tax dollars then have to be, to improve our parks, our streets, our sidewalks, have to be made up by our own population. And I want to see that investment pay off so that it doesn't work out that way. That's all I'm saying.
Any other discussion? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I think I accidentally, I cut myself off.
Randy?
No, not at this point. Right now, I'm leaning in favor of going with Lori's proposal, I think. And I do too, wrote down Jack Bro, you know, wean them off. You can't cut them. And I agree to that point.
Alan? Anyone else want to speak before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have to do anything else since that's a budget adjustment? Do we need to...
No, it was allocated.
Unallocated? All right. Thank you all for coming. Does anyone want to take a two-minute break and continue on? Or do you want to just continue on? Let's take a two-minute recess, and we'll be right back and finish the rest of our agenda.
Our stores are full, and it's simple and easy to administer.
Can you help me remember where we'd be at our agenda now? I think the next item would be from the Finance Committee, applications for operators' licenses. Item number three on the Finance Agenda and Staff Recommended Approval of the Names on the Issue Sheet. Finance Committee also recommended approval. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, recused.
Morissette is recused.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve these operators' licenses. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the licenses are approved. Number four, consider possible changes to the municipal code regarding additional restrictions to temporary beer and wine licenses. Ordinance number 10-08.
Move for first reading.
Yes, the motion is to have a first reading of this. Is there a second to that motion?
You're recommending what we have in front of us, or recommendation from Finance?
Well, maybe before you have the motion.
Is there, we haven't heard a recommendation from Finance. Does Finance recommend that we pass this? Is there a recommendation from Finance?
There were some changes made in Finance.
There were some changes made.
But this is not it.
So, this isn't it, then?
No, it isn't.
Okay, then we can't have a first reading of it.
Well, I was trying to respect your motion, but the, yes, if you want to hear the Finance recommendation, we did make some changes after some discussion. The purpose of this ordinance was in response to comments from older persons, Wyland, Bernard, and I think maybe you. So, we had some consensus that we might want to limit the number of temporary applications. The state law limits wine, temporary wine licenses to two, but makes no comment about limiting temporary beer licenses. So, we can do it if we choose to. We haven't done it in the past. So, there are two parts to the ordinance. The first part is to limit temporary Class B fermented malt beverage licenses to no more than, well, what was in your packet was four. What was, the motion in Finance was to change that to six. The additional change in Finance to item number one was to scratch the words organization, club, association, or church in that first clause and substitute...
Organizations eligible under WISSTAT 125.26.6, which is just the statute on temporary beer.
So, essentially, we're accepting, rather than list those out, we're accepting the state statute as defining who's eligible to get the license, which is the only way we can do it anyway, unless we choose to be more restrictive than the state, I guess.
Yeah, there's other limitations in the statute that work in here, and rather than going through all that, it's easier to do.
So, that's the change to number one. Number two was the section about limiting where alcohol can be served with temporary licenses. It is the feeling that, in general, we have often put that restriction on, but it's never been in our code to do it that way. And so, section two, we also modified by striking the last word starting with "with access limited to customers of legal drinking age." Instead, we substituted the language, "where alcohol may be served or consumed." So, the part D2 of this would then read, "License application shall designate a specific area or enclosure where alcohol may be served or consumed."
It should actually read fermented malt beverage.
Fermented malt beverage.
Because that's the legal term, and that's the license they're getting.
All right. And that was the motion from Finance, was to recommend that. I'd also point out before we move that we do have before us, down our agenda a little bit, an application from the Hockey Association for a number of temporary licenses.
I think it's seven.
Seven. So, if you choose to, you could have a first reading on this change, and we can bring it back in January, or you could adopt it tonight. I recommend adoption of ordinance 10-08 tonight.
So, moved.
Well, going to suspend the rules first.
I'm sorry, that's right. Move to suspend the rules because we're moving tonight.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by President Morissette. Any discussion? Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
Bernard?
Move to rescind my original motion and replace it with a motion to adopt ordinance 10-08 as amended tonight.
We have a motion to adopt ordinance 10-08. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Randy. Any discussion? Is that a, is that a clearing of the throat?
Two questions.
Are we going to be required now for each temporary license that comes forward to determine if it is a, what you had said earlier, special event, a meeting of the organization?
Yes, I mean, you still have to determine whether it's eligible under the statute. And the words of the statute are what you have to work with. They're kind of vague, and it is within your discretion as long as you've got reasons to, you know, evaluate each license as it comes in.
And then, my second question is, does part number two, does it designate that only individuals of legal age can be in this enclosed area?
Doesn't say that.
Okay.
It just says the license applicant has to show on their application where the area or enclosure where for malt beverages will be served or consumed.
Our practice has been to, in some cases, require an enclosed area, but we also let the parent bring their children, their underage children, into that area. Right? There are...
Yeah, the statute allows that even in a license.
Exactly.
If they're in with their parents.
So, but the challenge we have is, in some cases, we give a permit for the entire premises. And the state law talks about giving a permit, for example, for an entire park. You could do that. We have not done it that way.
It says it only with respect to the fair grounds.
Fair grounds.
Because the statute speaks in terms of fair associations.
So, we had some discussion about St. Patrick's Church. They have a fall, they have a festival where it's outside, and there are children on the entire premises. If we were to be too restrictive, they wouldn't be able to do that anymore. And there are other groups in the same way. Almost every, I shouldn't say that, but many of our applicants for this license are receiving them in places where there are numerous children present. And that's just the facts of how it works out.
And my question wasn't aimed at making it more restrictive. It was aimed at, I want to make sure we're applying the same rules to all the organizations who are receiving.
This, all this says is the application shall designate the specific area or enclosure. I think that's a consideration often the council wants to know before it issues a license. So, rather than quick drawing something up, it's required as part of the application process. What the council does with that is, you know, based on how it reviews the particular event and what's appropriate.
Well, in city parks, it's already required that it be enclosed.
Yes, yes.
That's part of our assembly ordinance.
What about up at the softball field? There is no enclosure. People walk around with cans of beer, and there are minors playing and minors present. There is no designated area that I'm aware of up there. Or if it is, they're not using it.
That's under a different license.
That's a different license.
I think what Scott is referring to are festivals that are held at lakefront.
In city parks.
It's been common practice to require it to be cordoned off and...
The way I look at this number two is, a parent who knew that their underage child was going to be at the event can take them into the area where the alcohol is if they choose to. But the question is, can they tell them, you are not allowed across such and such line? And by doing that, know that they're not going where there's the alcohol? And that's something I think is important. So, whether it be at the hockey arena, or it be at Booster Days, I mean, this is just something in kind of common sense, I think. It's a parent-friendly change. Any other discussion?
Well, as I, in Finance, I think it's unnecessary...
Well, I, as I, in finance, I, I think it's unnecessary for us to limit or put the number of licenses on there. So I'll be voting against it.
Does anybody in, does anybody want to put a limit on it? Oh, we did. Does there have to be?
No, but we turned down a temporary license last meeting for no real good reason.
And I think when we get back.
That's one reading of it.
When we get that, back to that discussion, we'll be talking more about the details of the ordinance itself. But this does close the door on a new type of license, where you can get a lot of temporary licenses in a row and make it as if you had a beer license. I think that's what we're trying to solve here.
The number is adjustable, but the recommendation from finance was six. At finance, discussion range from four to 12.
Question, have we determined whether the license lasts 14 days or just for the duration of the event?
That's all we've found.
Okay.
We found 14, we saw somewhere at previous time.
Because that's pretty significant.
Yeah, I'll do some, I mean, I live in the statute and in the booklet and in our ordinance, so.
It kind of makes.
It's 14 days with respect to an operating license, but I want to contact the alcohol folks at the state, just because it's in my mind as well, but can't put my finger on it right now.
It, I mean, it's possible it's, um, the, the length of the event or a maximum of 14 days, because there are some two-week-long events, and they kind of wanted to put a limit on it.
Yeah, I just can't find that stated anywhere in the statute, or even on the application.
Now, the statute says we do not have to regulate how many, correct, for beer?
No, but I think what, my take on what you're trying to do is to be consistent with the statute, just as.
I agree.
That it's not creating a new type of license with a string of quote-unquote temporary events. It's trying to somehow be more consistent with the statute, that they are temporary, and so a maximum of whatever you deem is, uh, appropriate. I mean, the statute does not set a quota, but.
Do you know the background why the, why the wine licenses do set a quota?
Um, no, uh, there's heavy lobbying on this Chapter 125.
Gee, what a shock.
Yeah. And there's all kinds of just unique, isolated types of requirements, and so I don't know that. I could, you know, I could ask and see what they have to say at the state.
All right, we have a motion second, anything further? Madam Clerk, do you have anything to say since you do these applications? Nothing. Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Mr. Burchell voted no. Motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. I wish I'd have thought of you before. Mr. Robson's been sitting here for an item that's not going to take us very long. How about we, um, how about we do that now? It's under new business, number nine A, the vacation of a portion of Pearson Drive. If you can find your way to that new business portion, the, uh.
Yeah, Dave, no.
If I'd have thought of that, I could have probably sent Danny Darnold and Mr. Robson home already. I mean, I would have missed that stimulating conversation.
I'm sorry about that. I needed to get an extra nap in today.
My apologies.
Just kidding.
Oh, really?
The, uh, there is an issue sheet. The staff recommendation was for approval of the vacation of the parcel. The finance, or pardon me, the plan commission also recommended approval of the vacation of a part of Pearson Drive located west of the Hudson Chrysler dealership. And Mr. Darnold, answer your questions or give you a briefing on it?
Yeah, this is, uh, for realignment, Banterra Commercial Subdivision taking place. This road alignment was needed to be modified. The vacation is not an issue. There may be an issue with the rededication or provision of an easement. Luther, uh, wants to only provide an easement versus fee title on this as far as rededication. And I don't know if that's an issue for the city. It still gives the city a right to have the road there, just that the underlying ground is not owned by the city. It's, it's an easement and it'll still be owned by Luther. I think part of the reason of that being is, um, perhaps the road now gets a little bit closer to the parking lot and things as what was previously approved by the city. I, you know, the vacation, because the vacation of the property is on the other side of the road. It's on the west side, so that, the vacation's really not an issue. It's whether the city wants to hold the issue of the vacation until whether the easement's acceptable or where you want fee title to the area that would be where the road is now. That would be the issue that's connected with this particular item.
Are we giving up any leverage?
Perhaps. If, I mean, you know, there's, there's nothing in consideration of this issue that says you have to act on this tonight. There's no particular reason that, the only reason it may exist is that it'd be easier to get some of the land, um, property information done so when January 1st hits and we have that, you know, all those things are taken care of before January 1st. That'd be the only reason.
Dave, does, does it work any hardship on you to not have this voted, or a final vote tonight?
Not for me, I don't even work for Luther's any longer. I was just here because I was involved in it, and if anybody had any questions, I could try to at least bring some clarity to it. Uh, Luther's own the property. I used to operate it as a dealership, but I haven't since May. And we own property adjoining to it, and we were involved in creating this. When this easement was recorded initially, it was recorded incorrectly because it didn't follow the road.
Yeah. Initially, the, the city only had an easement, then the property was dedicated fully. Uh, so we do own the, own the existing right-of-way. It is dedicated. Difference is, we would have the right to have the road there, we just wouldn't have the fee title. Now, where that would become an issue of Luther or not, I don't know. I mean, what they have offered to us is an easement.
What is, what is the downside of not having a fee title on it?
Well, I'm not sure there's any significant issue myself, and we still have the right to have the road there. And, you know, the road will be maintained by the city of Hudson. I.
I'd like to have our city attorney make a recommendation.
Well, I just, I mean, the preference is always to have a publicly dedicated street. You own the street, you own the right-of-way. There's no question about what you can do in that right-of-way. Now, there's only certain things you, the city typically wants to do, but if they were subdividing, it'd be required to be dedicated. And just as a legal matter, I would say you want to have it dedicated. At least you want to look at what issues could come up with just an easement, and I would have a chance to look at that.
Perhaps we want to postpone this till Catherine has the opportunity to visit with the Luther Legal Council, then we can bring it back at that time.
Move to postpone.
We have a motion and a second to postpone. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Postpone. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to, um, item five, the 2009 park user fees. I ask that this be pulled from the consent agenda because there is a couple of things that direct your attention to the three pages stapled together with the issue sheet, and then the second page where at the bottom, there's two lines concerning the sailboat mooring fee per season. In the past, we've always charged the same for residents and non-residents. The park board recommended increasing the mooring fee from the $530 for everyone alike last year to 550 for city residents and 650 for non-city or out-of-state residents. We today researched and found our original permit from the Army Corps of Engineers for this, and on the third page of the permit, there was a condition applied. Everyone must be charged the same fee. And so, that seems to be the reason we haven't done that in the past, where we do for most of these others. And with that, the finance committee recommended approval here with that line struck. And I would recommend approval with that line.
Well, I think we have a math issue we need to discuss first, don't we? Because the, the mooring fees cannot be more than the cost of the city maintenance of the area that benefits the moorings, which we interpret to also mean Lakefront Park, which certainly the setting benefits the moorings. If the math worked out properly, that these balanced each other, the expense the city has in maintaining the setting and the income, if you take 650 down to 530 for everybody, then the math is off, and they don't balance anymore. So there would have to be somewhere between 530 and 650 would be the uniform charge in order to make them balance.
I think they were just going to assess the additional fee.
Here's, I, I put on your table tonight, um, this sheet that has, it was prepared for 2008. If you go through that, the rational basis for the fee set in 2008, the 530, was arrived by looking at estimated actual operating costs, which came to $299 per year for mooring, plus a park improvement fee of $211 for mooring, plus sales tax, comes out to 530. What the park board is recommending, and what, we didn't talk about this in this level of depth at the finance committee, but what, what the park board recommended was that the operating costs remain the same. The park improvement fee be increased by $20 from $211 in 2008 to $231 in 2009. And that was their basis for recommending the increase from 530 up to 550. My understanding of why they recommended the other was that it was not based on an analysis of actual cost basis, but more just the feeling that out-of-city and out-of-state residents should pay more.
Okay, so it wouldn't have been allowed by the Army Corps of Engineers contract in the first place?
No, it wouldn't, but I don't think they knew that.
That's okay.
That wasn't brought up at least.
Sure.
Or as we're looking at the other fees, what are paid for people in the city, but not out of the city, not being at it.
I want approval of the 2009 park user fees.
Second.
Second, second by Wyland.
What, to what cost? To clarify for me?
Five fifty.
Five fifty.
And the others, um, some other significant ones, and, and, um, the treasurer, finance director, Crusoe's not here tonight because she had a family event to attend, and so I excused her. So I'll try to fill in, although I may not get this exactly right. They have done some pretty significant looking at the costs involved with Grandview Park. And the costs at Grandview Park have been escalating fairly rapidly. The electricity to run the lights has gone up a lot. For example, um, she called several other cities, and it's pretty common to charge $50 for the lighting for, to use a field. We've been at 25, and they suggested going to 30. And frankly, Betty's not 100% sure that we're going to cover the Grandview expenses even with this.
No, the Grandview expense has doubled.
Yeah, the Grandview expense has gone up a lot, and, you know, it's 1850 plus tax to $25 plus tax to use the field for a night for softball. Still pretty reasonable, but it is a, if you look at it on a percentage basis, it's a jump. There was a look at the costs involved on that one. Okay? Other questions about this before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next one is the mooring fees. I think we covered it already. That was noticed as a separate item. That one's done, number seven. That takes us to the bids by the municipal insurance. Right, Devin?
Yep.
Go ahead.
We advertised for bids, we received two bids, one from Wassa Insurance, our current carrier, one from Spectrum Insurance, representing the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Municipal Insurance Plan. Older person Burchell, Nancy and I reviewed the quotations bids. It was very helpful having Al on board to guide us through the insurance maze. There were a lot of terms that Nancy and I did not understand. We then met with both of the carriers to answer some questions we had, and we met again and discussed it further. The plans were very similar, the costs, we've had a long history with Wassa. I think, as Al will explain, the cost isn't everything insurance, in insurance. The three aspects that led us to choosing the league plan first related to the public officials liability insurance, which covers you and city officials in the area of liability. The league plan had $6 million limit, and Wassa had $2 million. They were willing to go up to five, but there would have been additional cost. That was one factor. The other two, there was first dollar coverage by the league, under this same public officials liability, whereas Wassa, there was, I believe, a $10,000 deductible. So any legal fees, we would incur, whether it be with our attorney or outside attorney. So there was a benefit there with the league plan. The other one is first dollar coverage. This past year, we've had a couple of tax issues where we've racked up some legal fees. Again, the league plan would cover that first dollar, and there was a deductible with Wassa. So it's a recommendation of this ad hoc committee that we, for 2009, go with the league plan through Spectrum Insurance and then reevaluate their service and their capabilities in October, September, October. Several years ago, the league had a plan that did not operate very well under another agency, which is why we went back to Wassa. But we were recommending that we switch over to the league plan for 2009.
So move.
We have a motion to adopt the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance for our insurance coverage for 2009. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think we save about 27 over what we budgeted. 27 over what we budgeted, $27,000 on that. Thank you for your work on that. Alan Burchell worked on that along with Devin, and, um, I think we, it was good for us to look at our coverages.
Nancy was also.
And Nancy, yes, Nancy, thank you, Nancy. I skipped number 10. In number 10, it was.
I think we did do that as part of consent.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, I did, okay. You said we're only doing the public works foreman.
What I meant to approve then was only the Parks and Public Works lead man position we're going to bring back to finance wastewater treatment plant operator, street maintenance and park maintenance worker. Those other job descriptions are coming back. Is anyone, was anyone unclear on what we were approving there? All right, let's move on to number 13. Consider filling the vacancy in the Parks and Public Works lead man position. We're not using this foreman position, we're continuing on with the lead man position. And the recommendation of finance was approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is applications of Hudson Hockey Association for a temporary Class B, Class B retailer's license. This is an application for a series of dates. The dates are, um, what are the dates? Dates are December 20th, '08, January 10th, 16th, and 24th of '09, February 6th, 14th, and 22nd of '09. We did adopt an ordinance a few minutes ago that would limit any organization to six in a, not a calendar year, but from June, in a license year, which runs.
July 1st to June 30th.
July to June. So, um, that's where we stand.
They have had, well, there's three. The association had, well, I take them back to, they would have had their pig roast in September, and then the one previous one, they were issued. The pool tournament is in April, so that would, assuming they'll have that, that'll be coming up in April.
Would the application fail on the basis of?
The ordinance hasn't been published yet.
There would have to be an amended application.
No, they have separate, they're individual applications.
Okay, well, do we know which ones they want to throw out?
We could ask, because we have a representative here, two representatives. Do you have a preference which of these we act on and which we don't? Would you step up to the podium, Mr. Sarno, and just identify yourself for us once again?
My name is Greg Sarno. I'm a member of the Hudson Hockey Association Board of, Board. I live at 668 Heritage Way in the town of Hudson. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to clarify, the ordinance was changed this evening. We put in our applications on the 9th. I don't know the legal ramifications of that. Could we get an explanation on why? We put our requests in on the 9th, and this was approved on the 15th. So is there any grandfathering in? How does that work?
Well, no, because each application has been for a single event, and the council has been very clear that there's no entitlement. They've put a quota on it now, and they could decide we're only going to take one application at a time there, and just, you know, not take the series. But they're willing to, maybe willing to consider a series, I don't know, because they're giving up. If they issue this number of licenses right now, if something, if they're not happy with how the event, you know, plays out, they will have already issued a license. So I think, I think they can say, to qualify as a temporary, you've got a, really a temporary rather than a different type of license, temporary means six. There's no definition in the statute, and they, they've come to that conclusion, and I think they can enforce. Otherwise, they could just take it each one singly. You see what I mean? As they had been doing.
I think maybe what you're wondering is, is this a shall issue license? That we, you know, we shall issue it to you unless we have a reason not to? There are some that are that way, and this isn't one of them.
No, not with alcohol.
Not with alcohol.
No, there's quite a bit of discretion, and they could say, no, we're, their practice has been, we just want one single application at a time. So they're doing something different by considering several at once.
Okay, thank you.
But let's, let's just clarify further. They've had three already in a.
They've had two.
They've had two.
The Association as a whole, I believe they had one in September for the pig roast, and they had one in, for the previous Crusader game.
And there's, you anticipate having one more general fundraiser event?
Right, that's in, that's in April.
In April. So under this new format, presumably you would only want to apply for three more at this time for Crusader games. You may speak, sure, step up.
I'm here to show the general manager of the Crusaders, and I think I sent everybody this letter. If anybody didn't get it, I have copy. I think, let me just put the rest here. I think the Hudson Hockey Association's been taking a pretty good beating on this in the press and everything, and I don't think they need to. These licenses are really for the Hudson Crusaders. He has the building, and that's why he applied for the license. Quite frankly, I'm going to speak very frankly. If you read through this at all, there's three points I really want to make. One is that we're a nonprofit. Management takes no money from this organization whatsoever. In fact, last year in Hudson, we lost $20,000. But our goal is to put hockey kids with talent into college. That's our only goal. And last year, we were able to do that with four kids, and we have three in the pipeline. So last year, I think we've, we've made that goal by, we'll get seven there. The other thing is, we have a budget of about $125,000 to $150,000 a year, and the majority of that money has been in Hudson. We also draw a lot of people in from out of town, the teams that come in, a lot of them bus in, and our conservative estimate, just for food, gas, diesel fuel, is about $250,000 that we bring into Hudson. Be quite frank with you, we're going to lose another $20,000 this year, and we've had, our league meeting was Saturday, so some of this, this was written on Friday, so I don't have some of this information in here. But coming into the league next year will be Somerset, they will have beer sales. Spooner already has beer sales. We had a league meeting because we have four teams that are struggling. It will soon be a 10-team league. The six teams that are surviving all sell beer, which is my third point. Sports and beer are linked in this country. I mean, they are just solidly together. It's just a fact. It's not something I think is great. I don't drink, so it means, that don't mean anything to me. But they are linked. People want to come to a sporting event and enjoy a beer. I also charge a dollar for kids, so we have lots of kids. But the kids aren't there to drink, they're there to have fun. If they go to a wild game, they sit right beside their dad who's having a beer. I just want to be treated the same as everybody else. So tonight, I heard that there's a softball association that has a six-month license. I think that would be appropriate for us, too. We're not asking to cause a big bunch of trouble or bring in a bad crowd. We don't allow that. What we want to do is offer family entertainment, but we have to be able to pay the bills. I'm not asking to make money on this, this project. I just want to break even. So I think Greg is representing HHA, I think really, this is more about Crusaders than it is about him. He's been trying to help us. I don't want to interfere with his fundraisers. They should not even be considered in the same, same breath. His three, his two or three fundraisers should have nothing to do with us. So I would like the council to consider our situation and let us know by February, so we, because this will be a decision we have to make in February whether we continue in Hudson or not. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I have a question to ask.
Yes.
Are you intending to say that you would like to resubmit these applications under the name of the Crusaders?
Well.
And not the Hockey Association?
We could, we could do that very easily. I think they were submitted because that's the address that, I'm the renter. I rent, I rent the building from Greg.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clear that up.
Well, here's, okay, let me, let me address a couple of those points that have come up. Yes, it's not a site-specific restriction that we passed in ordinance 10-08. So yes, there could be multiple organizations. Someone else could rent the Hockey Association and could run an event there. Could be, you fill in the blank. But under Wisconsin state law, to get a temporary picnic license, your organization has to have been incorporated or established, or whatever the language is, for six months before you're eligible to apply. So you can't just form a group and then come and get a liquor license from us. So if you've been more than six months, and you meet the, the state definition that's in that section of the code that we referenced today, which I can't remember what it was, but she knows, 125 point.
26, yeah.
26. Then you, you would be. But if you have the license, then you're keeping the money. I mean, you're not, otherwise, it's, it's, it's not allowed for you to be transferring the money off to somebody else. So you, you know, I assumed that the Hockey Association was keeping the money before. Was that not the case?
Yeah, you cannot get a license for someone else and have someone else operating and, and taking the money from the licensed activity that, that has come up before. It's, it's a violation of state statute. So it would have to be your organization that meets, the organizations that's actually operating and controlling the alcohol sale business that applies for the license and meets all the criteria in the statute.
But the Hockey Association could take the money and adjust rental fees.
Well.
They not?
Well, they've got to be in control of the operation, and we don't really want to encourage, I mean, you've got it, the applicant has to be operating the licensed activity.
All right.
And I don't know what they're doing, and I don't want to make suggestions regarding.
I think what he's asking us is, is there any way that we'd be interested in granting him a temporary license similar to the softball association? That's what I kind of heard tonight. And I think that's whether we act on, obviously, it's not on the agenda, so we can't act on it, but whether or not we refer it back to committee to talk about, I think that's what he asked for tonight.
Well, as I said in, in the Finance Committee, there's a whole nother question here that has come up from this, and it goes back to the golf links application and the indoor entertainment, that we have only allowed restaurants to have a regular license with one exception, and that's in a city park, and the softball association has got it. So we wrote in an exception. And the question is, could we have a six-month license for indoor entertainment, a delineated list of what would be acceptable? And that's a little can of worms that, you know, would need to go back to committee. We didn't, we didn't notice it, we haven't done staff work on it, we aren't ready to do that tonight. And it won't, it won't help us with the item that is on the agenda, which is to act on the applications that they made right now, which is for temporaries for these dates.
And I think our challenge here is, based on the reading of state statute, does this qualify as a unique, specific picnic-type event? That's, that's what we struggled with the last two meetings to try to figure out, does this even qualify? Because we don't want to create a new type of license, but does this ongoing activity qualify as a single picnic license?
Well, we've gone through this before. The statute, the language in the statute is antiquated. I think the best thing you can do is look at it, do the best you can, trying to be consistent with the types of organizations or actually events that you have considered to fall into those categories. But I have a concern about the application that's submitted, if it's really not being operated and controlled by the corporation that submitted the application.
Well, representatives of both the parties are here, and, you know, they've, can you keep the money, Greg?
Say that again?
Can the Hockey Association keep the money as required by state statute? Because if you can't, we can't approve it. And that's kind of the end of consideration of this application. But if you, if the Hockey Association can keep it, I was going to propose that of your seven that you requested, I think we're to the point where you're going to want to ask for three, and maybe it should be the three in January, and we should vote on those. Is that what, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but.
I would like to ask for one change on that. If we could ask for the first three, December 20th, January 6th, and January 16th, if those, those are the first three.
The 10th, January 10th, January.
The first three of the dates there, there's another city council meeting on the 5th, at which point, most likely, we'll have a petition for beer licenses for the Crusaders as the petitioner.
Does that sound reasonable to the council?
I have a question on the application, the date of December 20th. What is the lead time on application on these? Two weeks or more? I think that that was not the submitted timeline.
Submitted on the 8th.
On the 9th, but that's not two weeks before the 20th. Excuse me? Okay, on a temporary, it's five? Okay.
The wine is the one that's a 15, correct.
Okay, so it's.
So if they have wine in there, then it has to be 15.
Right, okay, because usually we get wine in there to.
I'll move to approve your recommendation.
I think better.
Well, with the 20th, and then the first two in January.
Just say the dates and the.
The motion is to approve the temporary Class B, Class B retailers' licenses for the Hudson Crusaders hockey games, the applicant being Hudson Hockey Association, for the dates of December 20th, January 10th, and January 16th. And there's a motion by Morissette, and second by Lori.
Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse myself.
And Mr. Burchell's recused. Any discussion? Yes, Lee, well, Lee raised his hand.
Go ahead.
He might have been stretching.
Okay. I, I would like to comment that I, you know, I voted to, or I made the motion to deny this previously. I thought I would get a lot of feedback on that, that would be negative. I got a lot of feedback. It was all positive. And so I will vote no again today. That's what my constituents want.
All right. Lee?
Well, I go back to my original concern. If you reread the words of the statute, where it says, "A unique," how did that, how did that read?
"Particular picnic or similar gathering at a meeting of the post or during a fair conducted by the Fair Association or Agricultural Society." But you've got to understand, too, it, I mean, it lists all these various organizations, so.
Right, but I'm thinking, it, it still talks about a single event that's held for a single purpose. It doesn't, like, and, and when we brought up the discussion of a six-month license for a, a different kind of license, again, I'm, I'm looking at this thing going, we're creating a new kind of license if we say you can get a string of temporaries. So I, I think that the, the correct path is to go and say, is there a different kind of license for a season of activities like the softball?
I think that's probably true, and we can bring that back at a future meeting to look at that. Any discussion, Lori?
Well, I'm confused why we passed the ordinance that we did for no more than six temporary licenses in a given license year, and now we're not even honoring that.
Here we are. The Hockey Association would only have six licenses.
So now you're not going to have.
I'm hearing non-support for the.
Well, you're not going to hear, you're not going to have a pig roast every month.
They may have different tournaments, you know.
Well, these are regularly scheduled events which go counter to the wording of the statute.
Right. Which is a different situation. And to support the wording of the statute, it says, "Unique events," to limit it to six unique events a year makes a lot of sense. But again, to say that these are not unique events, it's a series of activities, you're back to creating a different kind, you know, different kind of license.
So what constitutes a unique event? So can St. Pete's not have two picnics in a year? Because it wouldn't be unique, right? If you had two of them in one year. You know, we're just kind of, I think we're looking for reasons not to approve it.
No, like I said, my, from, from my perspective, it's not associated with them at all. It's associated with the intention of these licenses and how they're, how I interpret they're intended to be used.
We're picking and choosing, and I don't think, and I think Lori's point is to be consistent. And I guess if you mucky it up with all the, what do you, who decides what? You know, what constitute a unique event?
Well.
Regularly scheduled, for one thing.
Right, I, I think that's the, that's what I heard.
Because they have dates doesn't mean it's regularly scheduled. Can we have a vote?
We can have a vote. I heard a call for the question. The question is on approval of three dates, December 20th, January 10th, January 16th. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
No.
Wyland?
No.
Yes.
The vote is two to two. I vote yes. Motion passes. We will bring this back and look at whether we should have a new category for a longer-term Let's go back to our agenda. Number 15. Number 15, consider revisions to Hudson Municipal. Number 15, consider revisions to Hudson Municipal Code, Chapter 184-6, A2 and A3 regarding the holding periods for second-hand articles and second-hand jewelry. Ordinance 11-08 was suggested by our city attorney who found a discrepancy between our municipal code and the state ordinance. This is kind of a housekeeping thing to bring us into agreement with the state law, and the finance committee recommended approval.
Move to suspend the rules.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second? Roll call, vote?
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Birchalls? Yes.
Brenner?
Yes.
Move to adopt ordinance number 1108.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did you vote yes, Alan? That's a 5-0 vote. There were no nays. That is adopted. Where are we at now? I've lost my agenda.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Oh, sixteen. Application of, Robert W. Madsen. This, this is an application for a second-hand jewelry dealer's license doing business as Elizabeth's Fine Jewelry, 2117 Cooley Road. License is, was to be for the period of December 16th through December 31st. The action by the finance committee was to table, and that's our, so as such, I'm not sure, because we haven't had this happen before, but...
Well, I think Lori had made...
Never came out of committee.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I think she wanted to bring it back for reconsideration of that based on my explanation of...
All right. Let's take this up as the, as the, without objection, let's take this application up here again, talk it through, and so. Situation is that the law says that you shall issue unless...
Shall issue unless there's a felony conviction within 10 years or a misdemeanor within five. And the issue in this case is there's no conviction within those two time periods, but there has been a citation issued for violation of the city ordinance regarding license, second-hand jewelry licenses. That won't be resolved until sometime in January or later. So, under a strict reading of the statute and the ordinance, you would have to approve the license. It's two weeks. And other thoughts are that, look, you can take into consideration that there's pending proceedings, but if you guys want to pick up the discussion and...
Sure.
That was in finance, feel free.
First, just some background, someone who's listening or watching this trying to understand what's going on is that we, we, there is a state law dealing with pawn shops and second-hand jewelry dealers. It sets out a number of things. You, you cannot buy a used article from someone who's a minor. If you buy it, you have to hold it for a certain number of days, 21 days, before you could sell it or otherwise dispose of it. That law is a little bit different for pawn brokers than it is for second-hand jewelry dealers. We have had in Hudson just one second-hand jewelry dealer who's routinely been licensed. There's been another jewelry store in town, been in business for a number of years, and they did not, had never sought to be licensed to handle second-hand jewelry. The citation was issued because an individual came who was underage. They did get a driver's license. Was he not underage?
I don't think that was the concern. The holding period applies regardless of...
It was the holding period. Okay, it was the holding period. My mistake. Actually, there's some pretty specific rules for what you have to do to identify the person and identify how, they have to prove ownership of the piece. They did get a driver's license from the individual, but they did not hold it for the 21 days, and they did not hold a valid second-hand jewelry license. When they became aware of this, they came and applied right away. So basically, their position is, we didn't know, and now we're gonna try to follow the state and local ordinances in the future, and one step to do that is to apply for a license. Now, our ordinance and the state law says that you will issue it unless they have a felony conviction related to this type of thing within the last 10 years or a misdemeanor conviction within the last five years. Well, doing this kind of business without having a local license would be a misdemeanor citation.
Well, it'd be a forfeiture, but I think the statute also says ordinance related to...
You're right. Okay. So with that background, that's where we're at. Now, understanding that if you were to give this license, it expires again in a few weeks. It expires before we meet again. If you table this or take no action on it or deny it, they won't be licensed and they'll have to come in and apply again for their 2009 license, you know, in time for us to, to look at it at our next meeting. And with that, the discussion that came out of the finance committee was that we would essentially take no action, which would kill, which kill the, would be essentially a denial. Maybe I'm putting words. It would be to take no action, that they would not have a license for the next two weeks. How's that? Is that a better way to put it?
Because we can't, we can't deny it based on the state law, right?
Can't deny it, but we can choose to take no action on it.
Really? Well, it says it shall, well, no, it says shall grant.
Grant.
So it sounds like we have to. Unless.
Unless, yeah, those...
And we don't know?
Conviction, we don't know.
And there hasn't been any conviction?
So I, I mean, I think given, trying to put some common sense and reasonableness into it, if you chose to, you could say, look, there's pending proceedings. We're going to wait to see how they, that's not what the statute says exactly, but I think a reasonableness interpretation would allow for that. They always have an appeal right. The alternative is to say, they meet the statutory criteria of no convictions, it's a two-week license, and we'll, we'll grant it. I think for a full year, you'll want to make it clear that they don't get any property right. If, if you were to grant it, it would have to be conditional on the outcome of proceedings, I would think, but that's a different...
But Catherine, will this license expire before the proceedings occur?
Yes, that's correct, correct.
I'm gonna move that we grant the license.
We have a motion to grant the license. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm a second. Is there any discussion?
I'm making this motion because there does not seem to be any evil intent on the part of this applicant. It seems to be a mistake that they tried to rectify as soon as they discovered it, and there is no conviction of any kind against them.
I agree. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. License is granted. Okay. Authorized development of plans and specs for the 2009 Carmichael Road Mill and Overlay Mr. Chuck Schwartz is here with us tonight. He'd like to tell you about this. This is our large 2009 road improvement project. We expect, expect to spend over a million dollars on this, and the idea here is to get going on the procedure forthwith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. What I'd like to do first off is just kind of describe the project's scope for the council as well as the TV audience, and what you see up on the screen there is the same map that you, you had in your council packets this evening. And on the right side, you'll see the freeway and kind of the, the northerly end of, of the proposed project. What, what's shown in green is, is the three-inch mill and overlay for, for Carmichael Road. And north of the freeway interchange there on, on Carmichael is its Cooley Trail to the bridge deck. And then there's also a small portion, kind of a finger that sticks out to the, to the east there that's still in city. And that was included in the project because it's in similar condition, and if it's not done as part of this, when will it be done? The project is essentially a mile and three-quarters of Carmichael Road to the south there. You can see it begins again on the south end of the interchange, the south end of the bridge deck there, and it continues south, past Hanley Road, around the curve of the dog track to a point approximately 600 feet south of Riverview Drive. With, with the estimate here, we do have two proposed alternatives, and the first one's shown in blue, and it's on the, on the south side of Carmichael Road near the dog track, and that serves as the off and on ramp for northbound traffic. Alternative two is the off ramp onto Albert Street going southbound on Carmichael Road. So, with that being said, and also too, I should point out too, it's a little bit difficult to see, but that the sanitary sewer project this past summer to service the school, this would bring a couple hundred feet of Mayer Road and tie into that, to that new bituminous work that was done there for a similar reason, doing that at the same time, because if it's not done as part of this, when will it be done? It just makes sense to do that. Now, these, now, these two alternates, they were built essentially at the same time, and, you know, not only did, did they serve the dog track, but they also served the neighborhood directly to the north as well. Is that Beadham Farms? Now, I broke down the estimate, and Carmichael Road... Carmichael Road, total project cost with construction contingencies, legal, fiscal, engineering, et cetera, is 1.33 million. Alternate one, total project would be 118,000. Alternate two, the southbound exit ramp to Albert Road, that, that project is estimated at 57,000. That brings the total estimated project cost with alternatives to be 1.5 million dollars. One of the things we did discuss at, at Public Works was the potential if you were to, well, what we, what we talked about and what, what we're recommending is, is a higher grade asphalt for Carmichael Road north of Hanley, and, because that's, that's where you see all the truck traffic, in particular up by the freeway interchange, but you do see a lot of truck traffic all the way down to Hanley. One of the things that could be done to lessen the cost of this project is, is a two-inch mill and overlay south of Hanley Road, which would save you approximately, and a two-inch on the alternatives, which would save in the neighborhood of a little over 100,000 dollars. And with, with the dog track being vacant, and I, you know, I don't know what future uses, to me, that, that, that does seem appropriate to go to that two-inch south of Hanley.
I have one question. I think it was last year or the year before, we were approached to make sure that there, when this was done, that there was a walking, biking path that came down Carmichael and joined up with a county walking, biking path. And I, I was just flipping through here to see if that was included in this, in this proposal. And I don't, I don't see any sidewalk, bike path included here. Do you remember that, Scott?
Yes, this proposal does not include that. We have, as you can see, a money problem already. We are going to mill and overlay the roadbed, and if the council wishes to designate part of that roadbed as a bike path by striping, that's a separate issue. But we're gonna mill and overlay the entire roadbed as it exists, and the city only has so much right-of-way, so we're not gonna be widening this road.
All right. Because I was just wondering if that came into the discussion, because it was a, a safety issue getting, using that street, especially now with the school down there for biking.
Sure.
So you're saying that wasn't included in this?
No, that's not included. And Chuck, since we've interrupted, if I may further interrupt for, for just a moment, we also did discuss a possible savings, because this is such a pricey project, we're trying to save money, but yet not skimp on the quality of what we're doing. There does, there was some discussion about alternate one, if you look at that blue line south of the road and east, excuse me, west, west of Albert Road, that part of the road there could be argued to be serving mostly just the dog track. And I understand that there may be some people who come off of Carmichael onto alternate one in order to get to Albert Road rather than go to, through Mayer Road to get to the Beadham Farms development. I would, without traffic count, I would estimate that number to be low, and I think that we would, we believe Chuck and the, and the committee, Public Works discussed that we could save an additional 40, approximately 40,000 dollars by not doing that 350 or 400 feet right there.
Well, the question before us tonight is about plans and specs.
Yep.
And the question is, how much would you save on the development of the plans and specs by not planning and specifying for alternate one, which if we were to do so, we could still get the bids in and then decide whether to do the alternates or not, right? So, I mean, you can either drop it off now, which I'm with you on how low the traffic is there. And, you know, the, the potential that something different might happen to one of these roads that we just put money in always scares me. Even this little chunk over here to the far right of your map, you know, the, when you said, if we don't do it now, when will we do it? But I think the DOT has mandated that if there's development on this corner, that road's gonna get vacated, and there's gonna be a different road somewhere else, right? So, I mean, and it looks like 10,000 dollars to me as I look at it here, because you're already there, so that's a pretty small thing, but same idea. So do you wanna take his recommendation for how to bid it right now? I mean, how much would we save if we drop off alternate one all the way from plans and specs?
Well, just using rough numbers, if you looked at 6% for design of 100,000 is... 6,000, thank you.
6,000.
It's getting late at night here.
Is that, is that be what you recommend, Scott? I mean, you wanna drop it off right now and save the 6,000?
I think it would be doing a disservice to our residents who live in the Beadham Farms development to drop off all of alternate one, because they do access the freeway by getting onto Albert Road and then onto alternate one east of the dog track area, and thereby getting onto Carmichael to go to the freeway.
Then maybe one of my questions, and I don't know if Tom or Chuck, do you know, what's the road grade on that, the, what's your rating system called? The Whistler, Whistler? What's the Whistler rating on that chunk of road? I mean, we know we're gonna do Carmichael, because it's bad, but how bad is this little road that... It's really, if it wasn't the fact we were in the neighborhood, it wouldn't be at the top of the list, I'm guessing, so...
Well, we certainly need to save money somewhere.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize BRA to prepare specs so that they can be put out for bid with alternate two and all of Carmichael at three inches, and, excuse me, I'm sorry, I misworded that, going to two inches south of Hanley, because we don't have the heavy truck traffic there that we have north of... we don't have the heavy truck traffic there that we have north of Hanley. So, to start again, to do a three-inch overlay north on Carmichael, north of Hanley, two-inch over, mill and overlay south of Hanley, in the green area that you see, and to include alternate two only and not alternate one.
Second. We have a motion. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor. Well, in consideration, you know, I think that's a good, solid plan, but do we want to alternate, alternate bid the two inch south of Hanley?
Two inch two as opposed to three?
Yeah.
Bid it both ways.
Bid it both ways.
Sure.
You know, 'cause with stimulus packages and not knowing what the future holds, you know, it might just, and that, you know, that's really not, you know, a significant change there as far as a, a couple of bid items, so...
What do you feel about that little hook on the north end there, going onto the frontage road that the mayor referenced?
Tom, Tom can, you know, Tom's walked it with Sandy, but it, it's, it sounds like it's pretty important, and it should stay. It's in fairly poor condition. The little finger off Cooley Road there.
What's the condition of that right now?
It's in poor condition.
Poor?
Yes.
All right, so let's leave that one.
Better fix it.
Okay, so you were in the process of making a motion that I heard to be that we would authorize development of plans and specs with alternate one being dropped off, alternate two included. We would ask for three inch north of Hanley.
And three inch, and with an option for two inch south of Hanley.
With a two-inch option south of Hanley. How about that little chunk up by Target? Is that gonna be two inch or three inch?
Up on the, north end there?
The north end by Cooley.
Three inch.
Three inch.
That's where truck traffic occurs.
We actually have ruts in the, in the, in the asphalt there.
And is that where the, what do you put, more of a latex blend in there or something? And when you said higher quality, did you mean thicker, or is there actually some different asphalt?
Yeah, it's a higher grade asphalt.
Better, better asphalt.
Harder, yeah.
Okay, and do we have a second to that motion? Yes, we do. Is there any discussion?
We have a discussion.
Yes.
On our, on our pricing of that, is there any way we can not tie our price of the bidding to the value of the project, more or less a flat fee instead? Or do you tie everything to the value? What I'm saying is, it sounds to me like we pay 6% for the bid to get specs put together based on how much the project costs versus a flat fee. I get, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, you know, you know, our current contract is, and you know, this is kind of the same way we've handled Crestview Drive Mill and Overlay.
Right.
And then, because it, we don't have any utility work and things, it was discounted 15% last year for the plans back, and I'm getting your point here. Bear with me a sec. I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. You know, what's, what's nice of tying it to percent of construction is that if things are added or subtracted at will, you know, the prices are adjusted without having to come back with kind of a, a change in scope. With that being said, you know, we could certainly tie it to the cost estimate, or you know, we could provide a lump sum, you know...
And I guess what I'm saying is, can you come to us and say, we can do this, we can do the spec bid for X, rather than a percentage of the project?
Yep.
That's what I'm asking, if you can.
Yes, well, we certainly can, for just to kind of ease it, to expedite everything. Do we wanna just use, use the, the current cost estimate as far as that percentage?
That's what I'm asking you, is, is there any, I guess my point is, is there any way that we could say, you know, less than that? I guess, well, I'm not looking for more, I'm looking for, for less.
Yeah.
Well, you don't necessarily wanna tie it to the current cost estimate.
That's what, that's what they're doing.
Well...
Is there any way of tying it just to construction cost, but not materials? Because obviously that fluctuates dramatically.
Well, we could certainly work, you know, the way we've traditionally done things here. You know, it's no problem that, to put together a proposal, a lump sum fee for staff and for council to review. We haven't done that at this point for your consideration tonight, so...
Oh, I understand.
To me, there, you know, we can proceed, kind of as you always have, we could proceed using the cost estimate that I put together, or you know, I could sit down with staff and, you know, work out a lump sum number that, to bring back to you at your, you know, with the recommendation at your next meeting.
Or you might be able to approve up to a certain amount. How else could we do that?
Could you say up?
What you're looking for.
Maybe, maybe if, we could do it on percent of construction, not to exceed the cost estimate, the value, the constru, you know, the, tie it to that, so it would be...
Which was 6% of this 1.0...
1.5 million.
Yeah.
Well, doesn't that 1.5 include some things that we've taken out now, so...
Yeah, that, that number would be adjusted accordingly. So, again, with, with anticipation of, you know, I'd be comfortable doing that. Tie it to percent of construction, not to exceed my cost estimate, and then, you know, that'll allow us to go on on this and, you know, 'cause my goal was to get something, present plans and specs to, for your, your approval on the 19th of January.
So did you feel, could you feel comfortable with that, to say?
Yeah, yeah, 'cause it is a, kind of a, like I said in my letter, it's, it's a little volatile out there right now, so...
Chuck, for the edification of everybody here, is it not correct to say that of contingencies, engineering, fiscal at 25%, about 12, 13% of that is your fee?
Yes.
Okay.
Design as well as the construction.
So we would be taking these, these underlined amounts, for instance, on the major part of the work, that 266,000 would become 133,000. That would be your fee. So we would say not to exceed 133,000 on that portion, and we would add it to alternate two, which would be, you know, 5 and 1/2 thousand, and we'd say not to exceed 138,000 or 139,000.
Seems too high to me.
I, well, what I would...
Go right there.
What, what I'd like to do is, I would like to tie to design.
Design's 3%, right? Is it about roughly 3?
No, it was, it's 6.1.
Yeah, and the bid was about 3? I think 3%.
No, I mean, I, I split it, I split it two ways.
Okay.
You know, you have roughly half of it's design, half of it's construction. Construction goes smooth, that number stays small, you know, things go miserably, that, that number can grow a little bit.
For tonight, we're just talking about bids and specifications.
Yes, yes.
That part is 6%.
6.1, if you use, you know, the, the total estimated of, of this, what's shown here, so...
On this list here, Chuck, which, which line items would the 6% be applied to? Like the top line?
The 1,067.
The 1,067, yes, the 6.1 is applied to. How about the next one, contingencies, engineering, and fiscal? No, hold that.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't apply to that, it would just apply to the three construction numbers, the base and the two all.
But we, didn't we drop off alternate number one?
Yes, you did, yes.
So now we're applying it to 1.1 million. It seems to me it should be more like 66,000 dollars.
Yes, for design, yes.
Right?
Right?
Not to exceed.
So then the approval tonight would be to ask you to come back with a lump sum price, not to exceed 66,000 dollars. Is that the kind of thing you were thinking?
Yes.
Well, I can amend my motion, and we can approve that tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and, well, now you see why, why we're trying to, and then who do you want to empower to make the decision to go forward with it?
Well, could it be done tonight?
We can do it right now.
Not to exceed?
You're gonna provide all, you're gonna do all the drawings, provide all the specs, you're gonna prepare for bid for no more than 66,000 dollars.
Okay.
On the entirety of the work minus alternate one.
All right.
And I will so amend my motion.
We've got a motion on that. And a second, there's a lot of nodding going on. Everybody okay? Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. There you go. Want to stay up there and do update on projects?
Yes, I do.
Great.
Well, the good news is this will be the last update on projects for 2008, and actually the last update on projects until spring construction. And we do have final pay requests. They've been processed and submitted to the city for the Crestview Drive and the Lakefront Wall, and so the only public project now that's ongoing will be the Carmichael Road. Also, I wanted to mention that my inspector, she'll be on her three-month furlough starting after the end of this week, but she is available by cell phone and needed, you know, in special cases, she'll certainly help out. And then our office is shut down between Christmas and New Year's, and, but I am in town, and so if you need anything, certainly feel free to call my cell phone.
All right, thank you. Any more comments or questions for Chuck? I think that's it. Okay, where does that leave us? Communications and recommendations of the mayor. We were all greatly saddened by the death the other day of Dennis Christopherson, a longtime city employee who had been our water utility director recently, and he ran a great department. He always had a smile and a story, and he's gonna be missed. And we, there is a funeral at St. Patrick's Catholic Church in Hudson on Wednesday this week, day after tomorrow, at 11:30 a.m. Visitation one hour prior to the service at the church. And tomorrow night, December 16th, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m., visitation at the O'Connell Family Funeral Home. Many of city staff will have, or have a skeleton staff here during the funeral. At City Hall, we will remain open, but most people will be at the funeral. And so DC's family will be in our thoughts and prayers. And I would like to wish everyone else happy holidays, and thank you for a great 2008. Any communications and items for future agendas from any older person?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add, whatever committee it should go to, the liquor license issue on the recreational issue for whether it's a non-restaurant-type license, whether or not we should look into that again. And I don't know what committee, does it go to finance, does it go to public safety? Not sure where, where it should go. Catherine, do you have any?
Well, finance traditionally, at least in my experience, has done the licensing issues. All the liquor licenses go through finance first, so on that basis, finance, I guess...
Then I'd like to recommend we put, have that on the next finance agenda.
It may be the kind of thing that needs, needs work from multiple committees over a period of time.
Absolutely.
It's a, it's a big step for us. Any other, anything else? Anyone else?
I'd like to mention that several years ago, when I was new on the city council, I spent a very informative and enjoyable morning on my front porch with a man who taught me how the water utility for Hudson worked, what they did, why it was successful, and he, this was Denny Christopherson, and his, his enthusiasm, his zest for what he did, he truly enjoyed his work, he was very good at it. I love to see a man who's turned on that way by what he does in life, and I think that's the way that Denny lived, and we will all miss him very much.
Lee? Randy? Laurie? City Attorney, City Administrator.
Briefly, cap statements did go out today, so you should be receiving them in the next three days, and, you know, as city staff, we'd also like to extend our condolences. I mean, he was a coworker, a friend for all of us too, so, to Sydney and the family.
We'll adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. We're adjourned.